Hey, welcome. Esoteric Dubitism again. Back for more on consciousness and thinking about this really constantly. Been studying this topic my whole adult life. Taken many courses in university, on college level, on all types of subjects: psychology, linguistics, physics, neurobiology, chemistry. And all these things are tying together for the subject. And it's been one of interest to me, but really it's extremely complicated. You know, like a PhD in so many different fields to really understand thought, you know, the deep philosophy, the best of the Western tradition. You know, these names as a kid, my father had on a shelf, you know, the great Western classics. Descartes, Locke, Hume, Kant. And you're just really some of the greatest minds of the Western tradition that thought about these things. And, you know, I've said many, many times, to some extent, everything is just a commentary on Aristotle and Plato. That they thought about almost everything, had opinions on it, differed in opinions. And, you see, you're talking powerful ideas. And, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get into the presentations. Like, it's tough to talk to the computer for so long, computer screen for so long, but it's important. I'm enjoying doing it. I'm getting a personal reward out of doing it. I hope that this is useful to other people. It will build a community and people who have been watching. And I could see on YouTube how many hours people have been spending watching this. So presumably, there's quite a few people that have watched all of these or watched parts of them, at least tens of people. And that's why I'm still making these online. I guess it's definitely beneficial for me to do this. But, you know, we'll see the people wander in here a second. Then I'm gonna get started. I'm just preparing the stuff on my computer. And I got so much information, like each time I look at this, I think it's gonna become longer. There's so much here to know. You know, it's really unfeathable how much, how deep this topic is. And I've studied so many things that, you know, it's mind-boggling how complicated this is and how much you need to know. Just like yesterday, going over optics in the history of light. And, you know, that's, that's important. You can understand perception without understanding what light is. And then you think about, we don't even know what light is, like the most modern experiments till today. And we're trying to figure out these basic concepts. And you're thinking like, you know, haven't we solved this? And it's like, no, we have not solved this stuff. Most of these questions still remain completely unanswered. And a lot of our studies have only given us more questions than answers. Crazy to that. So I got a lot of stuff here. Let me see if anyone's watching. I got three people here. So glad, you know, let a few people wander in. And you're just for my, for my own self. Like, I put those table of contents and timestamped them. I was reviewing them and it's very useful. And so let me jump right in. I got a few people watching. Make sure the sound's working. I'm gonna enter share screen. And I was thinking, I've been smoking a little bit of marijuana due to whatever personal reasons. You know, here it's Detroit medical marijuana, very popular. I got the vapor. So I'm a little slow mentally than I would be. But I first got started in streaming, interested in streaming from chess videos. You know, like where, because I competed chess as a kid. And I enjoy following competitive chess. I still play regularly and coach. And I was watching these live streams of chess, like King's Crusher, if anyone follows. And he comments on the game when he was playing. And even occasionally beat grandmasters, top players. He played like the King's Gambit. And he was really good at beating beginners. And it got me back into chess and I found it very interesting. And so I haven't seen someone doing what I'm doing here. Feelable these PowerPoints. But this is just kind of like a live stream conscious study session. And, you know, take different direction to seeing who's watching. You know, most of this is taken from college/university content. And so here is WikiBooks on the study of consciousness. And I went through this whole thing, skimmed through it, sped read through it. And it's a nice breakdown. And I don't know if, you know, is Wikipedia, but to put Wikipedia into a whole book style. And, you know, see like the PDF version here. 336 pages, table of contents, historical ideas, Aristotle, Galen, Homer, Plato. You know, today, Dennett, Black, Crick, Chalmers, Nagel. The philosophy of consciousness, you know, the problem of regression, subject-object paradox, different fallacies, phenomenal consciousness. A lot of these things we've discussed already. Some of them were yet to discuss, you know, dualism, realism, idealism, panpsychism, philosophical problem, the hard problem, problem of space, the problem of qualia, the machine, artificial intelligence. We look at Bayesian and neural network models. And a lot of different topics related to understanding consciousness. And, you know, hopefully, if so, people who took the speed reading and are trying to use those speed reading skills, hopefully, people will be reading this and will get, you know, some of the better understanding, you know, just the history, like optics, I went over a few times of this WikiBooks. Interesting has the different philosophers and includes, you know, some sort of representation for how they understand the world. And light is extremely important. Like, did light emanate from the eye? Was there something from your eye that was shot to the object and comes back for vision or some, you know, source eventually thinks it's the sun? Or, you know, now we have light bulbs and artificial light in a much more complicated understanding. But this topic was extremely important for any understanding of consciousness because of perception, you're conscious of what's around you. There's so much more stimuli around us than we actually take in. We research on like the poverty of the stimuli. And you see this framework is pretty empty. There's a lot to fill in. So even this is Wikipedia. And you sing Wikipedia, I'm giving you better information than on Wikipedia on these subjects in a lot of cases. And so, you know, that's what I've noticed. Here's the current, you know, form of the Wikipedia WikiBook on the subject. And I encourage people to read it. If people are practicing this speed reading, you could probably flip through it pretty quickly. Okay, so let's get started. Back into the subject. Some nice reviews. You know, a lot of the stuff we're gonna go over. We really know what to call things, understand what they are, how they see, you know, building this bigger frame. And show you that even looking at Wikipedia, the frame for consciousness is still yet to be built. Like, there's a lot of groundbreaking research all over it. That's why the more I'm looking at this, the more I'm seeing all these new studies in different areas, mostly like in the qualia to separating processes of the mind and studying them, which is really all you could do, you know, without a big theory to solve the hard problem of consciousness. You need to, and to some extent, none of these things have really been fully understood. So we'll go over them in detail. Try to understand, you know, sense perception, brain activity, motor control. Okay, so I think I had this book once, 2007. And I think I've seen it in university bookstore. "Cognition, Brain and Consciousness: Introduction to Cognitive Neuroscience." "To Hippocrates from the brain. And from the brain alone arises our pleasures, joy, laughter and jokes, as well as our sorrows, pain, griefs and tears. Through it in particular, we think, see, hear and distinguish the ugly from the beautiful and the bad from the good, the pleasant from the unpleasant. All the time the brain is quiet, a man could think properly." So outline, introduction. "Cognitive neuroscience, the combined study of mind and brain. The advent of neuroimaging techniques has revolutionized the study of human cognition. These new techniques allow us to explore topics like conscious experience, unconscious processes and mental imagery. Neuroimaging techniques allow us to investigate brain structure and dynamic function in healthy individuals." So you're looking at the scale, like 10 to the negative seventh. Like, how big is a neuron? In the head of a fruit fly, the fruit fly brain has over a million neurons. So you think how tightly those things are packed in there? We're gonna be talking a lot about this drug dopamine also. And we have tens of billions of neurons in our brain. So the sound waves, like audio perception, come to our eardrum about 1,000 times per second or one wave per millisecond. Neurons can fire as fast as 1,000 hertz, although the average neuron in the cortex fires about 10 times per second. The auditory nerve is a bundle of nerve axons, each of which fires slower than 1,000 hertz, but together they can respond at millisecond speed. You know, notice the disconnect, your vision is quicker than sound. And, you know, the mathematics is clear. The sound, the sound wave versus the sound of a light wave, like lightning is the common example. And, you know, we're looking for science to make inferences about observations to how to study these things. You go back to physics and how physics, you know, tried to figure out astronomy. So more back on the same scientific method that we talked about in the rise of physics is gonna be the same at play here for neuroscience inference. And, you know, go back to Popper and Kuhn. And I went over this in substantial detail. So cognitive concepts are based on constituent behavior observations. Inferred concepts in cognitive neuroscience include areas of study such as language, learning, memory or vision. Concepts like working memory are not given nature. They emerge after many years of testing when a large body of evidence seems to be explained by an inferred concept. "Brain measures of working memory are also inferential. Working memory functions in the brain have been studied using behavioral measures, but also with FMI, EEG and single neuron recordings. Each of these measures has its pros and cons, but none of them is the ultimate measure for working memory." So converging measurements, when you have these different measurements, you can't measure everything and know everything. So you're trying to get it from different angles. So overall, brain indices of working memory converge well with behavioral measures. "Cognitive neuroscience is based on the studies such combined sources of evidence, but we must be prepared to find that our current concept may be interpreted in a different way with new findings. New raw observations lead to refined inferred concepts and theories about cognition." So major landmarks of the brain with the medical midline view showing the center portion of the brain between two cerebral hemispheres. You know, keep on seeing this, will really understand the brain structure, start seeing what it does. And, you know, every time we see this, it'll become even more and more familiar to us and the names of these brain parts and what they do. So we've discussed this many times already. You have the sagittal axial incronal slice for brain imaging. What angle do you see the two-dimensional image from? So, you know, back to Descartes, the, one of the main thinkers on the mind-body philosophy. And, you know, just what's the difference between mental and physical? Or is there one? So Descartes was convinced that the soul or psyche was unified whole. He rejected the idea that paired structures of the brain could support the unitary soul, but almost all the brain looks doubled to the naked eye. Two hemispheres, two eyes, two ears, two supportive halves. Descartes decided that a tiny pineal gland, which looks like a tiny dot to the naked eye, must be the point of connection between the divine soul and the earthly body. You know, so that many people have said that, you know, saying, what's the point of the receptor? If the brain's a receptor for the soul, where does the soul reside? Or is that the correct way of looking at it? And a lot of people who thought it had a physical location, you know, suggest the pineal gland. Darwin, "Human emotions turn out to have deep biological roots in the mammalian brain, regulated by more recent layers of the cortex. As a result, the evolutionary history of the human brain going back some 200 million years to early mammals is relevant to a host of important questions." More than anyone else, Darwin helped to establish the biological context of the human species. Darwin thought about human emotions as biologically based, which was not meant to minimize our vast culture and individual influence, of course. Darwin made numerous observations about emotional expressions in animal and humans and subsequently wrote a book called "The Expression of Emotions in Man and Animal." Hemholtz again, you know, keep on hearing these names. Hemholtz was a great sensory physiologist and psychologist of the 19th century, whose work on vision and audition are still read, but have, his biggest claim to fame is the fiscal law of conservation of energy, which he demonstrated using electrical stimulation of dissected frog legs. The idea that the brain and body are pervaded with electricity caught the popular fancy, leading to cult ideas like animal magnetism. Insight that electricity was part of the nervous activity led to the discovery of nerve potentials and the electrical activity of the brain in the early 20th century. Today, the electromagnetic activity of the brain gives us a whole set of imaging methods, EEG, voc potentials, signal neuron recordings, MEG. All brain imaging tools make use of fundamental physics and chemistry. So Ramon and Cajun's neuron doctrine, the working assumption of brain science. Santiago Ramon and Cajun was a founder of brain science. An open and important question of his time was regarding the nature of the nervous system, whether it consisted of billions of separate cells or whether it was essentially one great continuous network. Sorry, check on the chat. Okay, glad I got some people here. Let me finish this stuff. "So an open and important question at the time was regarding the nature of the nervous system, whether it consisted of billions of separate cells or whether it was essentially one great continuous network." And he used stains to bring out basic facts about the nerve cells under the light of the microscope. He's credited with the neuron doctrine, one of the founding assumptions of brain science, stating that the nervous system consists of numerous nerve cells, neurons entomically and genetically independent. Today's method of study of neuronal microstructure are advanced versions of the Gold-Geek-Cajol approach. To Broca and the localization of speech production. Medical observations are also relevant to the mind and brain scientists. It was French physician Pierre Paul Broca, who first discovered the region of the left hemisphere that was tied to language production. Broca had a patient who had lost all ability to speak except to say the word tan. After the patient died, Broca was able to perform an autopsy, finding damage to the posterior part of the third frontal convolution of the left hemisphere. So he concluded that this part of the frontal lobe was indispensable for speech production. This concept was hotly debated among scientists. Were there localized functional areas in the brain? Or was it the brain equal potential with all regions able to support cognition? The debate continues today. The speaking region of the left hemisphere is now called the Broca's area, although its precise function in language production is still being elucidated. Yeah, Wernicke and the localization of speech comprehension. Some years after Broca's work on speech output, the German scientist Karl Wernicke discovered a part of the brain involved in speech input. Perception and comprehension, Wernicke discovered by this observing a variety of aphasic patients, patients who had brain damage that resulted in language deficits. Wernicke concluded that damage to different areas of the brain resulted in different types of language disorders. Although there was evidence provided by Broca and Wernicke that some aspects of language are possessed, processed in specific regions of the brain, this concept remains hotly debated to this day. William James, obviously, the psychologist, philosopher, physician and painter. James is best known today as a psychologist and philosopher. However, he also trained to be a physician and painter. James taught brain anatomy in his 1890 description of the brain. It is, it is in good agreement with our understanding today. James' Principles of Psychology is often considered the best summary of 19th century psychology and brain science in the English language. Among many other points, James discussed the brain studies of Dr. Masso, who observed that blood supply to active brain regions increased. That finding is the basis of modern brain imaging methods based on hemodynamics, the flow of blood, including PET and MRI. So William James showed Broca's and Wernicke's areas based on the medical evidence from brain damage. The 19th century language regions of the left hemisphere are similar to modern neural imaging findings. 19th century scientists were profoundly interested in the question of consciousness. Ramona Cajul proposed the idea of a psychic neuron in the cortex, a type of neuron that would support conscious experience. The beginning of the psycho physics of the early 19th century was very much inspired by an effort to solve the mind-body puzzle. At the end of the 19th century, William James proclaimed that psychology is the science of mental life, by which he meant conscious mental life. So about that time, some began to disagree. Scientists like Hemholtz, Lowell and Pavlov advocated a more physical view of mental life. After 1900, Pavlov became famous for his experiments on classical conditioning of dogs. This helped to convince many psychologists that ultimately, all of behavior could be explained in terms of simple behavioral units based on reflexes. Thus, behavioralism was born and the study of consciousness was criticized as unscientific. For much of the 20th century, human consciousness was avoided by scientists. You chart looking at the difference between conscious and unconscious, explicit, implicit, immediate, long-term, attended, unattended, effortful, spontaneous, wakeful, in deep sleep, declarative, procedural, intentional, incidental. Recent wave of brain studies are investigating conscious and unconscious phenomenon in the brain. For example, FRMI study compared brain activation for conscious and unconscious events. Unconscious viewing of words activated visual areas only. While conscious viewing activated expanded regions in the cortex. So many of these debates still ongoing today. And we're gonna be talking about them. Local versus wide spread function of the brain. Neuron doctrine, question of consciousness, capacity limits in the brain, short-term and long-term memory, nature versus nurture, genes versus environment. So ancient questions and new ones are being addressed using modern neuroimaging techniques along with converging evidence from behavioral and medical studies. Cognitive neuroscience combines psychology, neuroscience and biology. Questions that could not be addressed earlier are now being explored. And that's exactly what I'm trying to do. So back down to three people. Just looking at the chat real quick. Okay, so, you know, people have to give me feedback if they're learning something from it or how they would like the information presented. You know, a lot of times the chat becomes very divergent from what I'm actually talking about. So I'm just gonna keep on going. There's a lot of material to cover. Okay, the origins of philosophical thought, ancient Indian philosophy and ancient Chinese philosophy. And use a lot, a lot of different divergence and convergence of different ideas. And a lot of times we're talking philosophy and we've looked at the, how the Greeks affected it in the Western canon. And we'll see that in reality, people all over the world have been thinking about these different topics. And consciousness is something that's universal to all people. And all cultures have thoughts on the subject from native primitive cultures to modern cultures, to native cultures, any different type of culture. You know, the same phenomenon of consciousness exists and they have different ways of looking at it. So this will be part of what we're going over. And that's why it's esoteric dubitism. And to some extent, understanding these esoteric ideas is actually more complicated than understanding the science. So the origin of philosophical thought, ancient Indian philosophy and ancient Chinese philosophy. General principles, mythology is an early form of social consciousness. Origin of philosophy. You know, the difference between the philosophy of the East and West and the particulars of ancient Oriental philosophy, the Indian and Chinese. So knowledge, general principles of the development of the philosophy, East and West. Ancient Indian philosophy and its main philosophical and religious tendencies. Ancient Chinese philosophy and its main schools. Personalities and terminology in India and China. Skills to be able to provide a comparative description of the philosophies of the East and West, to be able to identify tendencies in the cultural dialogue between East and West, to be able to select a difference of philosophical concepts of the East. So main concepts, got the Atman, Brahma, Buddha, Veda, Taoism, Hinduism, I Ching, Confucianism, Upanishads. Mythology is an early form of social consciousness of mind. You know, so this is directly related to consciousness and mind. Mythology and understandings from different cultures is the basis for the origin of both Western and Eastern philosophy. Mythological consciousness is a syncretic, but on the other hand, it sets the philosophical questions about the origins and development of the world, life and death. Philosophy was born as a form of social consciousness with the origin of class society in the state, possibly ancient India, China or Greece. You know, so we learn from Greece, but likely it possibly, archaeological evidence came from the East far ago. So the philosophies of the East and West are turned to the universal values, good and evil, justice and injustice, happiness and suffering, understanding the cosmological problems in personal existence, mythological significance, typical desire for scientific search of true knowledge. Differences between the philosophy of the East and West. Eastern philosophy focused on addressing the problem of human from the point of view of practice. Western philosophy is multi-problematical. It offers the general principle of being and knowledge. Eastern philosophy is developed in close cooperation with religion. Western philosophy is more committed to the scientific method. Sometimes we could see strong atheistic tendencies. So the Vedas, first scriptures and Sanskrit. Now, we'll be talking more about these. The Upanishad, philosophical commentary on the Vedas. Upanishads, under which Brahman is the supreme objective reality. Brahman is the unity of a holistic spiritual substance. Atman is an individual soul. Karma is the rebirth of the soul in accordance with the principle of retribution. Vedic literature contains knowledge of the fields of agriculture, medicine, astronomy, craft, military equipment. Vedic religion is polytheistic. Brahmanism originated at the beginning of the millennium, sanctifying social inequality. Suffering is insignificant because the phenomenal world is an illusion. Only reality is the spirit of the world. They have Jainism, also questioned Vedic values. Buddhism began to spread in the fifth century before Christ in India, China, Southeast Asia. The Buddha, Siddhartha Gautama. Main ideas, people need to try to overcome suffering in Varna caste system, the four noble troops, the theory of causality, Nox, which would not have consequences, all the world for a reason. Impermanence elements, nothing is permanent, nothing is a guarantee of well-being. The middle way, moderation in all things, eightfold path. You know, so people who've been watching these for a while will see their counterparts in Aristotle in the West. Ancient Chinese philosophy, the ancient Chinese cosmological concept, the spirits or gods, the yin and yang, the symbols of light and dark, positive and negative. They take on the character of the cosmic forces that are in a constant aspiration tendency to each other, universe, society and morality form because of this. Cosmogony ideas were set out in the ancient texts of the I Ching. In the Hundred Schools of Thought, you have Taoism, Confucianism, Maoism, legalists. All these are worthy of study. You have Taoism, founder Lao Tzu, Tao, the way, the stars and the goodness, the principle of the universe and human being, the main book of the Tao Te Ching, the doctrine of Tao Te. Main ideas, unity of man in the sky. A person cannot influence to the order of the world. His destiny is peace and humility, passivity. The basic principle of Taoism is the theory of non-action. Purpose of this theory is the moving into oneself. The achievement is spiritual purification, the mastery of your own body. Your Confucianism, moral improvement by following rules and rituals. Main problems, the system of ethics, political issues, behavior of the individual, public administration. Some more concepts, Zen. What do you not wish for yourself? Do not do unto others. Li, respectfulness, educated person makes demands to themselves, but inferior person makes demands to others. Cheng Min, correction of names. Everyone has to behave according to his own knowledge and the position. The emperor is the emperor, the father is the father, the son is the son. You have filial piety. Chung Tsu, the image of the noble person. All people can be highly moral, but is a privilege of the people of mental activity. Commoners have to serve the aristocratic elite. Wen, education. Di, obedience, submission to the elders and positions. Zong, devotion, loyalty to the emperor, the moral authority of the government. If the government will not have covetous greed, then people will not steal. The Amoism and Legalism, the Mo Tsu, it was opposed to Confucianism. Basic ideas, there's no predetermined destiny. You need to help each other in practice and so socially useful work to nominate wise. and socially useful work to nominate wise and respectful people to manage the country, whatever their position in society. And you have Sheng Ying, legalism. Basic ideas that humanity is the cause of all wrongdoing, the politics is incompatible with morality, develop the theory of despotic state to force instead of persuasion. Acquired knowledge, personalities and terminology of philosophy in India and China, specific philosophical schools of India and China, general principles of the development of philosophy in the East and West, tendencies, a cultural dialogue between the East and the West. So this one was pretty basic, you know, but I did want to cover, you know, it's esoteric dubitism for a reason. you know, so we're going to be throwing this stuff in, and actually, I'm going to get past some of this stuff, and it's going to be even, you know, basically straight esotericism once we get the science down, because that's more my subject, but it's important to be able to discuss this in the language of science. So just checking to make sure it's working. I appreciate whoever's here sticking with me. I hope they're enjoying and gaining from this. And sorry if I got poor quality here. I'm hoping going to get more feedback and we'll be able to improve these productions. But in the meantime, just, you know, improve our own intellect. So let's look at psychology in the ancients, because I really like to get this ancient backdrop, you know, like I listen to these courses, great courses, you know, me and my dad have almost all of them over 500, and I love the ancients and especially the ancient Greeks in philosophy. And, you know, a lot of the people say all of philosophy is just footnotes on the debates between Aristotle and Plato. And, you know, so it's good to add in this perspective, and eventually I'm going to add in more esoteric subjects, like you said, Eastern philosophy, the Bible, Kabbalah, things that you don't normally aren't included in the regular canon. So Ebbinghaus said that because psychology's questions go back to the ancient, it's got a long past but a short history. Think about psychology topics has been around a long time, but not the discipline of psychology. Psychology emerged from the disciplines of philosophy and natural science. Philosophy and science in Western civilization are rooted in the ancients. We study Western ideas because we are Western. So Dateline, the Assyrian Empire, the ancient times, you know, controlled Israel. You see my Ask the Rabbi streams, Jewish history, you know, from the Bible, that the Egyptian kingdom and the Assyrian kingdom, the major world powers at the time, until eventually you get to the Greeks. So Assyrian, you had the dream tablets, clay tablets. Survived because they were fire-hearted, written in a wedge-shaped writing system called cuneiform developed by the Mesopotanians, described dreams of death and the shame of being found naked in public, and saying these are universal human things. And we're going to be talking about a lot of linguistics today also. So Egypt, Greece, and Rome. So after the fall of Assyria, you know, the Greece and Rome, ancient world maps weren't very accurate. The ancient Celtic Empire. That comes into conflict with the Romans. And all of the people had different systems to understand consciousness and cosmology, and hopefully we'll be able to cover most of them, you know, and saying that this study will prove to be fruitful as a framework to understand esoteric ideas to, you know, so what was the contribution of the ancients? Ancient physicians and philosophers speculated about nature and the locus of the mind, sensation, perception, memory, and learning. Their contributions persisted for thousands of years, forming the foundation for modern philosophy and science. Traces of their ideas persist in current thinking. So early Greek medicine, priest enacted rituals to promote healing for a fee. Patient was isolated in the temple. Drugs were used to relieve pain and stop bleeding. The Alcmaeon, 500 B.C., first dissected bodies of animals to study them objectively, founded a medical school to counteract the priest, and promoted a rational, non-mystical, observation-based medicine, saw health and disease as a harmonious balance, taking a holistic, whole-body systems approach. Hippocrates, Hippocrates, famous, also rejected the superstition of the priest and founded a medical school, taught that all disease results from natural causes and must be treated by natural methods. Nature has a healing power, the physician's first duty is to refrain from interfering with nature's healing. Primum non nocere. He often prescribed rest, exercise, diet, music, and association with friends to restore natural balance. So observations by Hippocrates, the right side of the brain controls the left side of the body and vice versa. The art of healing, he described symptoms of melancholy, depression, mania, postpartum depression, phobias, paranoia, and hysteria. The nature of man, he described a theory of four humors corresponding to four elements of air, earth, fire, and water, blood, two bile's and phlegm. Bloodletting to balance humors was routinely practiced into the 1800s. Barber pole is a sign of a bloodletter. So they had the theory of the humors and personality. You know, too much of a bile could lead to character problems, even the Tanya of the Babich movement has ideas like this in it, you know, going back to Maimonides. This was almost universally believed up until the scientific age, a few hundred years ago, the Enlightenment. So yell bile, easily angered, chloraric, black, peevish, melanchonic, phlegm, apathetic and dull, blood cheerful, happy, optimistic. The term philomatic, bilious, sanguine, from sanguine or blood, referred to imbalances of the humor and were used to describe personality traits. Good humor refers to a balance of the humors. More observations by Hippocrates, described epilepsy. Seizures were considered a result of divine meddling, rejected such views and predicted that physiological cause would be discovered. Dry mouth theory of thirst says that as air passes over the throat membranes, it dries them out, creating a sensation of thirst that motivates drinking, still considered partially correct. And Hippocrates, somewhat the father of psychology, also the father of medicine, you know, describing the natural causes of psychological conditions, recommending holistic treatment, describing behavior patterns, formulating long-lasting theories of temperament and motivation, criticizing laws prohibiting women from studying medicine. Then you had Galen, the father of anatomy. Galen combined wisdom from Rome's Imperial Library with personal observation and experiment. He wrote a seventeen-book treatise, De Usapartium, on the usefulness of the parts describing the body, claimed that no part of the body is superfluous. Based on this, he asserted the improbability of creation without divine design. Body warmth, failed to recognize the heart acts as a pump, but said the heart's biological flame distill the spiritual substance, vital spirit, from the blood. So Galen's contributions on the passion and errors of the soul, described a method for curing diseases of the soul. Diseases arise from passions, anger, fear, which can be controlled via understanding and self-knowledge. Self-love binds us to our faults, own faults without a therapist. Galen first described the therapeutic relationship. Galen's work dominated medicine until the Renaissance. And Galen was a scholar of Hippocrates and other ancients. So the foundation of science, measurement, observation, mathematics. Advances in mathematics, the Greeks refined earlier accomplishments of the Egyptians in geometry and surveying as the basis for mathematical theory. Under the Greeks, math became the language of science, more than a useful tool. Math was used to predict solar eclipses, Lelios and Melitus, 585, fell into a ditch while looking at the sky. Pythagoras tried to relate mathematical relationships in the world to psychological harmony, harmonics and music, and other orders in the physical world. So Pythagoras. Principle of math or the principles of all things. Second foundation of science is idea of the phenomenon can be understood in terms of its parts. It may be that emergent properties arise from the combination and functioning of fundamental parts. Life arises from biochemistry, which is about the combination of physical elements. An analytical reductionist approach suggests that by breaking down a phenomenon into its parts, isolating them for study can be better understood. Atomism, Democritus said tiny atomic particles in ceaseless motion are the basis of all matter. The world is a mass of atoms that runs without the need of outside forces. The human mind is included in the physical world. The mind's contents, the arrangement of atoms, is the result of experience. Democritus incorrectly thought that objects beam particles at the mind to produce perception represented mentally in the form of icons. Xeno's paradox, Xeno of Alea, the view of mind gave rise to the problem of relationship between mind and matter and the reliability of the sensory system. So Xeno's famous paradoxes. You get the humanist tradition based on Xeno's challenge. Some Greek thinkers decided that the proper study of mankind is man. Man is the measure of all things. Socrates, Plato, and Aristotle established epistemology, the branch of philosophy that investigates the origin, nature, methods, and limits of human knowledge, study, learning, memory, and conscious awareness. Socrates questioned every assumption, doubted the obvious and ridiculed, wrote belief and pretension. Method of questioning to arrive of the truth is called the Socratic method, similar to Pithebul. Believe that truth lies hidden in every mind, and the role of teacher is to uncover it via discovery led by questions by the teacher. Antiphon used questions to treat grief and melancholy. So was called the first psychotherapist. Plato, student of Socrates, and recorded much of what we know about him in the dialogues, acknowledged the unreliability of the senses, but said knowledge derives from the process of reasoning about sensations. Forms are eternal structures that organize the world and are revealed to us through rational thought. Sensations decay, but forms are permanent analogies of a cave with flickering shadows cast fire outside. Forms of the fire, sensations of the shadow. God always geometrizes. Plato said that geometry increases the accuracy of knowledge in the world through measurement and deductive reasoning. Geometry is knowledge of the forms created by God. Can the human psyche be measured like the world? Plato suggested that people different skills and abilities endowed by God, classified people as gold, silver, brass, or iron. Some must rule, some must serve, proposed measuring the body parts. Aristotle, student of Plato for 20 years, completed, complemented deductive reasoning with an inductive observational approach. Aristotle saw the value of mathematics for making formal proofs to arrive at logical deductions from self-evident assumptions and clear definitions, also recognized the value of careful observations led to both correct and incorrect conclusions. So Aristotle had a psychology of memory, developed basic principles of memory that have been restated many times in psychology and are fundamental to contemporary theories. In De Meri at Remanentia, he said that memory results from three associated processes: similarity, contrast, contiguity, influence of the strength of association, or frequency of an experience, and ease of formation. Theory of causation, Aristotle also developed an analysis of causation illustrated by examining a statue. Material cause, what is the statue made of? Formal cause, its essence or form. Efficient cause, how the statue came to have that form. And the final cause, the actual statue. Attributions of purpose are unacceptable in science of the physical world but apply to people. Aristotle, in the art of poetry, described dramas having a percolative effect on the audience, draws out emotions. The catharsis later became central to Freud's theory. Said all life forms a ladder of creation, from the lowest to the highest forms of complexity. Scala natura, the nutritive, plants, sensitive animals, rational humans. The idea influenced Darwin's theory of evolution. He thought the heart was the seed of thought. Aristotle thought the heart was where consciousness arose. So Aristotle's misconceptions, logic led him to make other mistakes about animals. He tried to classify them based on a number of legs and presence of blood. He concluded that bones don't make honey, but bees don't make honey but collect it. He asserted that cage birds' beaks grow long as a punishment for being inhospitable to a guest in a previous lifetime. And you have epicurus, the epicureans. And the creatus asserted that all knowledge originates in sensation stored in memory, entirely materialistic, so the goal of life is to enjoy pleasures while minimizing the pain of others. Stoics include Xeno, obsidian, and Seneca, who asserted that rational principles, logos, guides the universe, but each person has a duty to follow. Passions are to be subdued in favor of reason. You know, Kant, so you could see, really, everything till today is based on these ancient ideas. So it's always a worthwhile endeavor to you revisit the ancients. And, you know, I'm going to be covering mostly science today, so I want to get in a little like mysticism. What is mysticism? You just have like a background thought on these ideas as we get more scientific about what does science tell us about consciousness. You have a definition of mysticism. Mysticism is the art of union with reality. The mystic is a person who has attained that union in greater or less degree, or who aims at it believes in such attainment. But what is reality? From this definition, only mystic can answer, and in terms which only other mystics can understand. What is union? From the mystic's perspective, it is not an operation, but an activity which is being done every conscious moment of the time with great intensity and thoughtness. We can know a thing by unity with it. So William James, varieties of religious experience, the marks of mysticism, ineffable. Says negative, mysticism defies expression, no words are adequate to explain its content. It must be directly experienced, cannot be imparted or transferred to others. No etiquette, mysticism is a state of insight into the depth of truth unknown through discursive intellect. The areas of knowledge are illuminations or revelations. Transience mystical states cannot be sustained for any great amount of time, at times when faded, their quality can be imperfectly reproduced in memory. Passivity, mystic will feel that he, his own will were in abeyance, sometimes as if grasped and controlled by superior power. The control factor will lead at times to secondary phenomenon, prophetic speech, automatic writing, mediumistic trance. Characteristics from Underwood. Mysticism is practical, not theoretical. Mysticism entirely spiritual activity. The business and method of mysticism is love. Love is the active quantitative expression of one's will and desire for the absolute. One's innate tendency to that absolute one's spiritual weight. Mysticism entails a definite psychological experience. As accordingly to the four rules, emphasis should be made that true mysticism is never self-seeking. So generic experience from O'Brien's variety of mystical experiences, the object confronted in mystic experience is thought by the mystic to be somehow ultimate, a belief that mystical experience is the ultimate experience one can have on earth. So Richard Rawl, the object is the fire of divine consolation. Saint Bernard, comparable to the beautiful vision in heaven. So asserted that the object is the ultimate experience possible to the human awareness because it is the ultimate reality, the deity. The manner of confrontations is always immediate and direct. You know, Saint Augustine. Intuitive, one-on-one cognitive relationship between subject and object, like the I-thou relationship of a buber. Insight, the unmediate perception of higher coherence. Saint Ignatius Loyola or Saint Teresa of Vila. The confrontation is always different from the familiar exercises of either sense perception or reasoning. Different backgrounds of mystics will cause the mystical experience to be explained in different terms, yet there are similarities which go beyond religious beliefs. For example, the self itself becomes awareness. So you have three rules for determining truth of experience. The reputed experience is not followed as a doctrinal conclusion from a person's basic philosophical or theological position, but is counter to it. The writings of Pseudodionysus or Meister Eckhart, the experience which is so highly extolled is the last logical step in a rigid speculative system. Either of them may have been authentic mystics, but one cannot come to the conclusion from their writings only when the experience does not fit in at all with the person's speculative suppositions. The chances are that it was a genuine experience. The reputed experience is not an instant of wish fulfillment, but is counter to one's wishes. The reputed experience alone gives consistency to the speculation. Gregory, the experience will be seen to be the luminous center in the light of which the Bible and philosophy and current theological countries controversies are understood. And Saint John of the Cross, everything takes its coloring from the experience. So three phases of life agreed on by mystics. So life is a concerns God, life is a concerns the creature. Intermediate life, a mixture of the former two. So Plotinus, the three descending phases of principles of divine reality, the Godhead absolute and unconditional one, God's manifestation as the nos, the divine mind or spirit which inspires the intelligible, the eternal world, psyche, the life of the soul of the physical universe. See the Upanishads, Brahman is the heart of reality, other than the known and above the unknown, Ananda being the spiritual world, which is the true object of aesthetic passion and religious contemplation, the world processes that we know it which represents Ananda taking form. Richard Victor, dilation of the mind, enlarging and deepening our vision of the world, the elevation of the mind in which we behold the realities which are above ourselves, ecstasy in which the mind is carried up to contrast with the truth in pure simplicity. Giacofane de Todi, symbolism of the three heavens, when the mind has achieved self-conquest, the starry When the mind has achieved self-conquest, the starry heaven of multiplicity is revealed to it as darkness is lit by scattered lights. Points of reality which pierced the sky, the crystalline heaven of lucid contemplation where the soul is conformed to the rhythm of the divine life by its loving intuition apprehends God undervails. The hidden heavy or ecstasy lifted up lifted up the ineffable state where it enjoys a vision of imageless reality and enters into possession of all that is God. Roy's Brook, the natural world theater of our moral struggle. Jacob Bohm. So Dionysus, the way of purification in which the mind is inclined to learn true wisdom, the way of illumination in which the mind is by contemplation is kindled to burning of love. The way of union in which the mind by understanding reason, spirit is let up by God alone. So forms of mystical literature. Your pastoral homilies, the writings, the mystics intimate communion with the divine. Sometimes the writings are written from sermons or preached. You have theological treaties directed to analysis of the mystical experience. Personal advice written to meet the need for instruction in the mystical of some definite person or persons. The advice is personal in two ways at once. Author mystic in the light of the personal experience and reader mystic counseling for personal need. And your confessions like Saint Augustine. Spiritual accounts direct into the point purposes simply to tell what occurred like Saint Ignatius of Loyola. Mary of the incarnation, Saint Paul of the cross. So a sample of mystics, you know, Meister Eckhart, 1260 to 1329. Process of reality is a series of emanations from the Godhead to the unspoken word. From the unspoken word to the spoken word, from the spoken word to love. The spirit from love to the ideal creation. Humans return to the Godhead in a reverse order. The practical spirit of Eckhart, the first stage of the soul's return is the regression from phenomenon. That is from creatures in their actual state because they are not merely nothing. They are annihilating the second stage is the beholding of the uncertain creaturely in creatures. That is of creatures in the ideal state. The third stage is the introspective, that is, one meditates upon the purely spiritual faculties of the soul, the trinity of memory, understanding will. So soul's ultimate destiny is not the trinity, but what is beyond the trinity, the Godhead itself. Thus, there's a fourth stage, a consistent passing beyond memory, understanding will to the delicate simplicity of the soul's pure nature to a oneness so rarefied that is almost as though it were not in man at all. So the Sufi Rabbi Basra. Eight hundred unlike many other Sufis, she did not pay heed to the beauty of nature. It was marked by extremely otherworldliness. Portinax best of her thought is concern the concept of pure disinterested love. The love of God for himself, oh my Lord, I worship thee from fear of hell, burn me in hell. And if I worship thee from hope of paradise, exclude me from paradise. But I worship thee for thy own sake, then withhold not from me thy eternal breath. Her doctrine of disinterested love would influence not only later Sufis, but traditional Islamic teaching. See the intoxicated Sufi Abu Yazid eight seventy five regarded as the first person of the intoxicated Sufis who would find God with his own soul. Scandalized the Orthodox Muslims by ejaculating. He was also the first to take the prophet's ascension as a theme for expressing his own mystical experience. Developed a doctrine of Fana absorption or annihilation, which would play an important role in later Sufi teachings. So hermitism and cabalistic mysticism, Neoplatonic and Neopathagorean influence. All Plato's works were preserved during Christian destruction in Greek literature. Plato's academy continued from the time of Plato until was closed in five twenty nine C E. Between the third and sixth centuries C E, Platonism underwent a revival. This revival is referred to as Neoplatonism. The nature of Plato's philosophy is positive towards synchronism and other systems could be easily added, especially true of Neoplatonism, which included Neopathagorean and hermetic concepts. So Hermes Trismegitus. You know, hermetic Kabbalah. Looking at the source of Egypt, Pythagoreans, Christians, Nosticism. Um, you know, Neoplatonism, the interplay of these different schools. Renaissance theology, Rastacrucianism, Freemasonry, theosophy, Golden Dawn. All these coming together. Tradition states that, uh, okay, lost my page. Hermes Trismegitus tradition says it lives 2670 B C E. Hermes Trismegitus is the Greek equivalent of Thoth and means the thrace great. Legend claims he was an Egyptian priest, legislator and philosopher and has written thirty six books on theology and philosophy and six books on medicine. The forty six books are divided as follow, ten books on laws, deities and the education of priests. Ten books on sacrifices, offerings, prayers, hymns and festive possessions. Ten books on cosmography and geographic information. Four books devoted to astronomy and astrology, two books containing a collection of songs in honor of the gods and a description of royal life and its duties. Six books known collectively as the Pastaphores and deals with medical subjects. The writings were imparted according to tradition to Greek philosophers such as Pythagoras, Plato, Aristotle and Herodotus. So Thoth was thought to govern over mystical wisdom, magic, writing and healing. Hermes was the personification of universal wisdom and the patron of magic. Both are associated with writings. Thoth was credited in writing the sacred books of Egypt. According to Iamblichus Hermes wrote twenty thousand books and Mantheo thought he wrote over thirty six thousand books. According to legend, both revealed to humankind, the healing arts, magic, writing, astrology, science and philosophy. Hermes provided the wisdom of light to the ancient mysteries of Egypt, carried an emerald upon which was recorded all philosophy in the caduses, the symbol mystical illumination. Hermes vanquished Typhon, the dragon of ignorance and mental and moral and physical perversion. It's the Emerald Tablet, truth without falsehood, certain and most true, that which is above is the same as that which is below, and that which is below is the same as that which is above for the performance of miracles of the one thing and of all things for the one by the meditation of one. So all things have their birth from this one thing by adaption. The sun is the father, the moon is the mother, the wind carries in its belly. Its nurse is the mother of the world. This is the father of all perfection, the consummation of the world. Its power is integrating and to be turned into earth. So it goes on and on. Several church fathers thought that Hermes was pre-Plato. So works to tributes to Hermes I refer to this corpus are hermeticum composed by a circle of Greek speaking Egyptians working in around Alexandria in the second and third centuries C E. The hermetic writings show influence of Platonic, Stoic and mystic Jewish traditions. So it doesn't appear to be Christian influence, although there are many phases, phrases and ideas that seem as if they might be found from the Christian traditions. For instance, the premander, there is an account of the creation of the world by the luminous word. Who is the son of God? Some scholars believe the similarities are due to the fact that Hermes and Christianity have some of the same sources. So manuscripts of the corpus hermeticum were discovered in Constantinople by agents of Cosimo Medici. Cosimo was so eager to know the contents from the material that he had Marcio Fischino interrupt his translation of Plato and devote his energies to the translation of Hermes. Finished the translation fourteen sixty four. Being a Platonic expert, he was able to see the Platonic element in the corpus, but he believed Plato got his ideas from Hermes. The misstating led him to believe that he had the oldest knowledge dating corpus back to the second millennium B C E. Made it the basis of all wisdom. Fischino also thought that Hermes and Moses were contemporaries, even speculates they might have been the same person. So you have the that period, you know, Plato and the Old Testament in translation commentary helped establish the Christian hermetic tradition that flourished well into the seventeenth century. Pico della Mirandola. Contemporary of Fischino. His importance, he added to the idea of magic of the hermetic tradition, the magic of Kabbalah. He went to Rome in fourteen eighty six with nine hundred theses of points drawn from all philosophies, which he wanted to debate in public. That points were reconcilable with one another. No debate occurred, but it helped to continue the Renaissance interest in magic through his books such as the dignity of man, apology and oration later had to appear before commission appointed by the Pope Innocent the Eighth. Commission was to investigate the heretical character of some of Pico's thesis. Pico made a retraction. And the new Pope Alexander IV came to Pico's rescue. Pseudo Dionysus in the aggregate. The celestial hierarchies claimed to be the Dionysus who met Saint Paul of Athens, accepted by many scholars of the early church. Real author is unknown, but wrote under Neoplatonic influence. Work would become important in the synthesis of Neoplatonism and Christianity. Link is done by identifying the angelic world with what the philosophers call the unintelligible world. Angelic celestial sub lunar. Henry Cornelio Sagripa. Born in Germany fourteen eighty six, confided in a letter at an early age that he possessed a curiosity concerning the mysteries. Went to the University of Paris where he gathered a band of fellow students interested in the same subject. Fifteen ten, wrote the first tract of his three books, they called philosophy. Divided into three books, natural magic, the magic of the elemental world, celestial magic, ceremonial magic. These divisions correspond to the divisions of philosophy into physics, mathematics and theology. Book one, he divides the universe into three worlds, elemental world, celestial world, intellectual world. Final book one discusses the relationships of the letters of the Hebrew alphabets to the signs of the zodiac planets and elements which give that language a strong magical power. Book two emphasizes mathematics and images. The letters of the Hebrew alphabet have numerical value and they are potent for magic number. Discusses the general principles of making the talisman imprinted with celestial images. Book three turns the higher matters to know the part of magic which helps one to come to the divine religion. Information contained in the chapter should be kept secret for the mysteries of God are always hidden. In Giordano Bruno. Fifteen forty eight, born in Nola, Italy. Enters the Dominican order fifteen. Early age came under the influence of hermetic tradition. Committed to both Catholicism and the hermetic corpus. Will later be charged with heresy and later renounce the Dominican orders and become an apostate. Travelled to many of the capitals of Europe and would be burned at the stake in sixteen hundreds for his heretical views. Says programmer religio-magical scientific reform. Believe that he was reviving the magical religion of ancient Egyptians, which he believed was older than Judaism or Christianity. He thought that even though the magic tradition had been suppressed, that it would be revived. Bruno believed that the religion of hermeticism was the only true religion. Believe that the Copernicus heliocentric theory was a potent of the revival of hermitism. And a revolutionist Copernicus would refer to Hermes and state that the sun is the visible God and ought to be the center of the world. Bruno thought that Copernicus failed to understand the deeper meaning of his discovery. So he leaked animism, heliocentrism, the notion of infinite universe and political reform through a reemergence of hermetic revolution. Also believe that existing Roman Catholic Church would be incorporate incorporate the hermetic tradition as part of its belief. Catholic church would condemn certain forms of magic in sixteen hundred immediately after his execution. Remark the beginning of the decline of the hermetic tradition, progress in Greek philology. In the sixteenth and seventeenth century enable Isaac Cassibum to date the composition of the hermetic corpus to the second century C E. But many believe that the second century C documents could have been copied from older ones. So humanist scholarship recovered other ancient documents opposed to animism or hermeticism. They also occurred the intellectual reaction known as skeptical crisis, a consequence of Descartes' teaching of mechanistic philosophy opposed to hermitism. The Rastacrucianism. Name is derived from Christian Rastacruz or the Rose Cross. Rastacrucian manifestos are two short pamphlets, the fama and the confesso, the chemical wedding of Christian Rastacruz sixteen sixteen. So that time, the reigning Duke of Wertemberg Frederick the One was an alchemist, a culturist and Anglo Anglo Phil. Wanted an alliance with Queen Elizabeth of England and to obtain the order of the Garter. The Garter was conferred upon him by James one. Thus, it would seem that James was making alliance with the Protestants in Germany. There seems to have been a secret treaty in sixteen oh four between James and the King of France and the Duke of Wertemberg. So the naometrio, unpublished apocalyptic prophetic work which used the numerological based on the Temple of Solomon, which the writer believe led to the events of European history. Writer predicts that in sixteen twenty Antichrist would be defeated. The popacy in sixteen twenty three, a new age would begin. So the European Union, you have Jewish mysticism, Kabbalism, Kabbalah. Literally tradition implies that the mystical teachings represent the true interpretation of scripture. You have Abram Afluwa, Abelaphiah, thirteenth century. Central aim was to open the way for perception of divine reality, found the means through the Hebrew alphabet contemplation of God's name. Uh, was taught would lead to mystical ecstasy. Influenced by the Savior Yitzchirah. Divine language was the substance of reality. The pure thought of God is expressed by spiritual language, the letters of which are the elements of spiritual being. Every language, not only Hebrew, may be a medium whereby the language of God is apprehended by human consciousness. As one contemplates God's name, one is led to see the name of God in angles to the heart. The soul will then leave the body in ecstatic joy and will receive an influx of spiritual life and bring forth rules of bodily posture. Like a Judeaized yoga. And you have the Zohar supposed the work of Repschenmann Bar Yochai, the second century. Uh, but brought to us by Moshe de Lonne in France in the thirteenth century. Most ways a commentary in the Bible interprets it through mystical symbolism. Zohar expresses outlook of the schools of Kabbalist, whose earlier work was the Bahir. Zohar represents the development of Bahir's ideas concerning God, human destiny and the significance of the Torah. It takes the starting point of the assumption that underlying all reality is the creative power of speech embodied in the written words of scripture, essential meaning of the Torah. Is it symbolic meaning? The central figure is the spirit, the living numbers conceived as the divine emanations. They are regarded as grades, degrees of creative or divine manifestations. Qualities, attributes, agencies of God, the spheres are divided into three triads with the tenth representing the harmony of the mole. Nice diagram. First triad. Kesser. We're into like nothing, nothingness, the primordial point from Kesser, you have chakma, wisdom. Enshrine the ideal existence of all things and undifferentiate unity. And from there, chakma comes the bina divine intelligence in which all forms preexist in the mind of God, which sees them in itself. It was said that the divine wisdom is the father and the active principles producing all things. The divine intelligence is the mother, the passover receptive principle. You have the second triad, chesed, gavura and tefaris. Loving kindness, power. Manifested mainly as the power of judgment or punishment, tefaris and beauty or forgiveness. The third triad, netsak victory, lasting endurance of God. Hode glory majesty, yasoved foundation, the ground of stability in the universe. And the tenth principle, mauchus kingdom, the principle which harmonizes the rest. So one tradition says that the spirit was first revealed to Adam in the tree of life and the tree of knowledge taken together. Adam would separate the two and so introduce the principles of division and isolation in the world. Evil is traced to the introduction of disharmony among the spheres. So enjoyed going over that one. Got eight people there. Yeah. So yeah, we got, I mean, the goal is to get into these esoteric topics. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to be covering a lot of science and a lot of different topics. But you know, this is esoteric duvetism for a reason, and my goal is to get into the Kabbalah, to get into these mystical systems. And, uh, but we should be able to speak about these things in scientific terminology. And, uh, you know, really I want to go into the revival of Freemasonry where generally science was seen as a subsection of theology. The purpose of science and thought was to strengthen our connection to the divine, strengthen our service to the divine. And somehow that connection over the last few hundred years and the rise of atheism got lost. And, uh, you know, by specifically focusing on the problem of consciousness and the inability of material science to understand consciousness. Um, and understanding the best of what material knowledge and the Western tradition has to offer us. And then we're going to reapproach these esoteric subjects. So just throwing in now a little bit of esotericism here and there. And, uh, we're going to focus mostly on science. So I have these like marathon long streams because they're really, uh, pretty deep topics, you know, so I'm glad to be going over them. And, uh, you know, I'll save that one on optics for later. Let's, uh, look at this MIT one on emotion. So we'll get back into the brain and heart science and trying to understand these cognitive approaches. So this from MIT course. Emotion and motivation. You know, let's understand it. So we're going to have history, definitions, models, burning questions, possible answers. Are emotions universal? Do emotions have unique physiological signatures? Why do we have emotions in the first place? And the understanding of the emotions to brain processes. So there's a lot of different emotions. Some estimate five hundred fifty different words describing emotions commonly used in English. More William James. More William James, fathers of modern psychology. Emotion is important if you can conceive of yourself suddenly stripped of all the emotion with which our world now inspires you, no one portion, portion of the universe would then have importance beyond another, and the whole character of its things and series of events would be without significance, character expression, or perspective. There's a lot of journals that regularly publish on this. Emotions are biologically based responses to situations that are seen as personally relevant. They are shaped by learning and usually involve changes in peripheral physiology, expressive behavior, and subjective experience. The emotion versus mood, mood diffuse, long lasting emotional states, emotion immediate responses to specific object or situation. The dimensions of emotion, arousal, could be high or low, excited, tense, calm, lethargic, availance, positive or negative, elated, content, and sad, gloomy. Here's a nice chart, basic effects are shown here, arranged in a circle in which the vertical dimensions represent degree of perceived arousal and the horizontal dimensions represent degree of pleasure or displeasure. So who has emotions? Emotions are biologically based responses to situations that are seen as personally relevant. They are shaped by learning and usually involve changes in peripheral physiology, expressive behavior, and subjective experience. So yeah, animals are gonna have that also. We feel sorry because we cry, angry because we strike, afraid because we tremble, and not that we strike, cry, or tremble because we are sorry, angry, or fearful. So they have the stimulus, the experience, and the response, and then the report on the feeling based on the stimulus response, which is basically animalistic. So how can peripheral, and this is, you know, I talked a lot about senses yesterday, and I have a lot more slides on sense perceptions, and we're gonna be talking a lot about this topic of sense perception. It's extremely important to understanding what we're talking about, you know, sense perception. Sorry, checking my other stuff here, so. So how can peripheral body movements, events influence emotions? So you study Sussing-Jin's two thousand and two experiment testing the facial feedback theory of emotion, asked some subjects to hold a pencil between their teeth in such a way that their lips being pulled back like they would in a full face smile, and others were asked to hold a pencil between their lips in a way that prevented smiling. Alteration of facial expressions could lead to change in subjective experience of emotion. The person on the left is more likely to report feeling happy than the person on the right, that by mimicking muscle expressions that that connects to emotional experience. And Ekman, the famous Paul Ekman's experience, here you have a man induced to make a fearful expression, raise your brows and pull them together, now raise your upper eyelids, and now stretch your lips horizontally back towards your ears. So you have the new, you know, so here's the common sense understanding, then the James Long study and the Canad bar. New theory, so how can peripheral body events influence emotion, perception, thought influence type of emotion, sensory feedback influences intensity of emotion. So Schacter nineteen seventy-one injected people with adrenaline raises heart rate, arousal, or placebo, little effect of adrenaline, your jumpy emotional eliciting situation, more fear for a horror movie, more anger when insulted, more laughter for comedy with adrenaline, but not if informed about the adrenaline, only when they didn't know about it. Creeky Bridge Experiment. Flimsy suspension bridge, three hundred fifty weet over jagged boulders and river rapids. In the middle of each bridge is an attractive female Confederate, asks each male subject to fill out a questionnaire, casually mentioned that his subject has more questions, he can call her at home, and provides phone number, dangerous bridge, more calls, soft bridge, safe bridge, fewer calls. Dangerous bridge produces high arousal, increased adrenaline, interpreted as attraction, physiology interpreted as emotion of attraction. I love these psychological experiments. Your basic degeneracy, but you know, saying this is how university, that's how scientists study this stuff, you know, degeneracy. So are emotions universal? Do emotions have unique physiological signatures? And why do we have emotions in the first place? Darwin. Noticed emotions in animals, emotions infant, early displays of emotion, infants display emotions that are distinguishable and similar to facial displays among adults such as joy, disgust, surprise, sadness, anger, and fear. Deaf and blind, spontaneous facial expressions of emotion in athletes. Emotions across culture, sprile means friendship to everyone. You have Paul Ekman, who was famous Six Basic Emotions Worldwide Studies of across the world, the happy, sad, fear, anger, surprise, and disgust. I have, I've read Ekman's books, great stuff, I've studied that many times. If you haven't read Ekman, I recommend it. So anger, disgust, fear, happy, sadness, surprise, that were largely recognized by all people across the world, happy more so than other, anger, non-Westerners significantly less, but generally this was considered universal recognition of emotional traits across people all over the world. So little chart on action, reaction, and stimuli response. So what about physiological signatures for emotions? Intuition holds that emotions differ from one another in their bodily manifestation, pride, disgust, anger, sadness, fear. Language supports this common sense idea. She got hot and bothered, you make my blood boil, he's just letting off steam. So your heart rate, lead to skin temperature. So why do we even have emotions? Interpersonal functions, feeling, affect is information, behaving, doing the right thing at the right time, interpersonal functions. You have the visual cliff for development of ideas. I was just studying this the other day, very interesting. You know, does the baby walking to its mother over the glass table have fear in that, hesitance to come to the mother? Why do we have emotions? So expressing fear enhances sensory acquisition. Green arrow depicts vector flow field, the skin surface deformation stemming from the anti prototype to the corresponding expression prototype allowing visualization of the underlying facial action patterns. Vector flow from anti fear to fear and anti disgust to disgust indicated the opposing expansion versus compression along the longitudinal axis emanating from the bridge of the nose. The result is in raised versus lower brows, increased versus decreased eye aperture and vertically elongation versus compression of the nose associated with raised versus lower lips. So we're trying to show that the fearful expression, the actual perception ability to see or be more well aware, air velocity, very interesting. You see the direction of study in these things. Fear in the amygdala. The brain connections to the emotions. So we're gonna be going over this many, many times, you know, until we get it down. That's why these streams are marathon streams, and I'm doing every day because there's a lot of information and probably gonna have to go over this many, many times to get this down. Your motion and the amygdala. Lesion studies. Social fitness, loss of threat appreciation impair social fitness. Lesion studies, more of them, maybe we'll read some of these studies at some point. There's acquired fear, fear from conditioning as opposed to genetic fear. Emotional memories brought about fear conditioning. Experiments have been observed in many animal groups. It appears that once a fearful memory has been established, is relatively permanent changes in behavior can be brought about by controlling the fearful response rather than by eliminating the emotional memory itself. The continuity between findings and diverse species suggests the brain pathways for this form of learning are similar. A fuller understanding of these mechanisms and animals may lead researchers to new treatments for fear disorders such as panic attack or phobia in humans. You know, so fear conditioning, like Pavlovian study in rats still till today, you're conditioned and unconditioned stimulus, conditioned response, unconditioned response. And, you know, studies showing the thalamus and the cortex, the different brain activity associated with the response to stimulus. So, you know, there's a lot of review of different studies about brain activity and emotions. Here's Ekman's Six Basic Emotions, and I'm gonna do brain studies on them, look for similar brain patterns. You know, we got cortical blindness. Lot of information here, you know, just your emotions are gonna be the key part of consciousness, and so we want to understand the connection of the brain to emotions in the most recent studies on emotions. So, you know, this MIT overview has a lot of stuff here, a lot of information. So possible that women have better memory than men, better recall for emotional life events, faster production of autobiographical memories to cues, more accurate in dating memories, wives score higher than husbands on vividness of memories for first date, first date, last vacation, recent argument. Amygdala activation. Studies that when seeing a gun. Difference between men and women. Your unconscious versus conscious memories, intense experiences, difference between men and women. So sex differences in amygdala activation and memory for emotional material, superior memory for most intense pictures in women, both men and women have greater left amygdala activation for pictures rated more intense. Women greater left amygdala activation predicted stronger long term emotional memories. Men greater right amygdala activation predicted stronger long term emotional memories. Interpretation, both men and women activate brain in response to emotional pictures, but there is on average a greater overlap in brain regions involved in analyzing felt emotions and making memories in women better memories. Okay, great stuff. That was MIT, got seven people here. Yeah, I'm gonna be talking a lot about Freemasonry. I'm not an initiated Freemason. I consider myself a student of Masonry, but I have never taken initiation formally like in a lodge, so that'd be dispute, just like the Jewish question, internal Jewish disputes. There will be disputes among Masons, what is a Mason? Do you have to take an oath to become a Mason? And so hopefully we'll be able to cover those topics, but I will be using, I do believe in the science of Freemasonry that there's some truth to the science of Freemasonry. And I'm just checking the chat, take off screen share for a minute, drink my kombucha. Yep, okay, you see the internet, the power of collective consciousness, now the power of the web to you know, the demonstrate collective consciousness, that possibly the web and YouTube could be a source of this, and you see like the chat and the flows and connectedness, and you could interpret like a modern day Masonry to some extent by the network, networking and the collection of interest, and I will be trying to get more into this. So I have a few, a few papers I think I'm gonna read, and then maybe I'm gonna, if I'm feeling strong, I'm gonna go on to linguistics also, you know, see if I got a marathon stream. I think I got less people watching me than before. Oh, Boz and Jackin, I mean, that's from King Solomon, the poles of the temple, and there's a lot of literature on that, but that's kind of the esotericism is when we're looking at these ideas over generations and generations where you really have to connect together, you really have to be an expert in so many different fields of wisdom and, you know, so consciousness is a good example to how can you understand consciousness? And you're saying, okay, what are the, what's the precursor knowledge to understanding consciousness? And it's a lot, you know, you gotta have like PhD level understanding of a lot of different subjects, just to really start getting the graphs of what consciousness is, let alone, you know, so Freemasonry is similar, and to me, I think Freemasonry is a better framework, because Freemason, we will include science, esotericism, religion, history, as opposed to like modern day scientists, a lot of them don't have such great universal expertise as the theoretical, the historic Freemasons. Maybe today it's tough to say if Masonry's kind of died out or became corrupted, as opposed to historically, you think of your great Masons, who are really on top of all knowledge of the, of the time of their day. So there's some reading, lot to study, you know, so let's read some scientific papers. So here, the neuroscience of motivated cognition. Stanford University. Goals and needs shape individuals' thinking, a phenomenon known as motivated cognition. We highlight research from social psychology and cognitive neuroscience that provides insight into the structure of motivated cognition. In addition to demonstrating its ubiquity, we suggest that motivated cognition is often effortless and pervades information processing. Pervasive influence of motivation on cognition. People often believe that their thinking aims squarely at gaining an accurate impression of reality. Upon closer inspection, the assumptions collapse. Instead, like the inhibitions of garrisons, Kellyers, Lake Wobakun. Individuals often see themselves enclosed others as possessing unrealistic high levels of positive attributes such as likability, morality, and attractiveness. This bias persists among individuals who should know better. Over ninety percent of college professors believe their work is better than that of their peers. CIA analysis overestimate the analysis, the accuracy of their predictions for future events. Doctors overconfidently estimate their medical knowledge. These cases exemplify the phenomenon of motivated cognition by which the goals and needs of individuals steer their thinking towards desired conclusions. Variety of motivations pervasively shape cognition. For example, people wish to live in a coherent and consistent world. This leads people to recognize patterns where there are none perceived control over random events and shift their attitudes to be consistent with their past behaviors. People also need to feel good about themselves and about others with whom they identify. As such, people often self-enhance evaluate themselves having more desirable personalities and rosier future prospects than their peers, and taking personal credit for successes but not failures. People likewise elevate their relationship partners and in group members, people who share their political affiliation and demonstrated in unrealistic ways. Motivations can also have opposite effect, bringing people to denigrate out group members even when the lines that divide us from us and them are defined de novo by researchers. Motivated cognition across the information processing stream. Motivation not only shapes what people think, but also how they think decades of psychological research identify mechanisms through which motivations affect cognition, but has only recently become the focus of neuroscientific research. These research efforts converge with behavioral approaches that provide insight into the structure of motivated cognition. Together, these efforts suggest that motivated cognition pervades information processing at various stages, including perception, attention, and decision making. All these processes are intricately related and frequently interact. We use them here as an organizing principle to briefly summarize how motivations affect what people see, how they think, and what they decide. So perception, research tradition dating back to the New Look Movement demonstrates that motives influence what people see. For example, people tend to see desirable objects as being physically closer to them and tend to imbue ambiguous stimuli with interpretations associated with reward. Recent neuroscientific investigations echo these findings. In one recent study, participants viewed arrays of moving dots whose direction of motion was difficult to discern and decided which direction they were predominantly moving. Before seeing these arrays, participants learned that they would receive a reward if the dots predominantly moved in a particular direction. People tended to see the dots moving in the direction associated with the reward and did so by biasing their visual search in favor of the desired perception. Moreover, occipital regions involved in perceptual encoding and prefrontal regions involved top down control were modulated by these motivational effects on vision. Motivations also shape people's visual perception of themselves and others. For example, people see their own faces. For example, people see their own faces and those of close others as being more physically attractive than they really are. And in-group faces as being more distinct and likable than out-group faces. In one recent study, participants viewed images of their own face morphed with positive trustworthy or negative untrustworthy faces and elevated, evaluated the extent to which each morph looked like them. Participants identified more trustworthy morphs as being more similar to themselves than were less trustworthy morphs. And the similarity between the untrustworthy morphs and the self-decreased activation in occipital temporal structures associated with facial encoding and prefrontal regions involved in top-down control increased. Taking together these data suggests that motivation influenced lower-level perception towards desired conclusion and away from the undesired conclusions. In addition, they suggested that top-down processes reflected by the prefrontal cortical activation influence low-level perception by biasing visual search in the direction of desired conclusions. So the box one, three principles of motivated cognition. Pervasive, goal-directed, impactful. Pervasive motives affect a wide array of judgments and perception, including self and other enhancements. Illusions of control, confirmation bias, in-group bias. Goal-directed, as with other motivated processes, bias conviction tracks the current need of an individual to fulfill a relevant goal. For example, people maximally self-enhance, self-enhance after being ostracized or negatively evaluated. Consistent with an increased need to self-protect to reduce and reduce enhancement following self-affirmation. Consistent with a reduced need to self-protect. Likewise, threats of group-related motives and intergroup competition increase in-group biases and reduce group-related motives by highlighting commonalities between groups. Reduce these biases. Finally, individual differences associated with chronically elevated motives predict bias, and it's impactful. Motivated cognition has far-reaching consequences and is adept. Goodness has been debated. On the one hand, self-enhancement predicts positive adjustment. In the face of adversity, on the other hand, motivated biases are often harmful. People who are over optimistic about their health fail to take preventative health measures. Overconfident students show poor skill retention, academic disengagement. Overconfident CEOs take unwarranted risks. Finally, people who self-enhance are perceived as arrogant and male-aligned. So on the right, you see the dots showing brain activity connected to perception, attention, and decision. So your box two. The influence of motivation on cognition, effortful or effortless. One way in which the neuroscience informs the study of motivation, motivated cognition is by helping to uncover whether motivated biases are effortful or effortless. One possibility is that motivated cognition reflects effortful attempts to distort information and reach desired conclusions. However, recent evidence suggests that motivation may set effortlessly influence cognition. Motivated biases exhibit features of automatacy, for instance, arising quickly and even when cognitive resources are limited. Second, the most consistent pattern of brain activity associated with motivated bias is reduced neural activation structures associated with deeper information processing. For instance, reduced LPFC and OFC activation is associated with more positively biased elevations of self, close others, and in-group members. Taken together, the pre-pretense of biased cognition and its negative relation to activity in these regions suggests that motivated cognition may be effortless. This is not to say that bias is always effortless. For instance, when threatened, people protect the self by applying different standards during self-evaluation, in effect accompanied by increased OFC activation. The effortful or effortless nature of motivation cognition is likely not fixed, but rather depends on the current motivational state of an individual. Attention, people often direct attention towards information that supports desired conclusions. For instance, individuals quickly accept information that cast them in a favorable light, being predisposed toward success, but carefully scrutinize threatening information which suggests they are likely to fail. Motives likely influence the neural systems involved in attention control, diverting attention towards desirable inferences and away from undesired one. For example, in a recent study, participants related the likelihood that they would experience various unpleasant future events. They learned the base rate probability of experiencing these events. And finally, reevaluated their personal chances of having each event befall them. Participants adjusted their personal estimates with base rate information was better, but not worse than the initial estimate. Crucially, reduced activity in lateral prefrontal cortex. A region involved in attention control during the presentation of more pessimistic base rate predicted and optimistic bias in their likelihood estimates. Taken together, these findings suggest that people may heed motives by ignoring information that threatens their desired conclusions. This suggests that in particular situations, tuning attention towards undesirable or threatening information may help people to reduce their motivated biases. Decision-making. People often implicitly or explicitly exploit convenient heuristics to reach desired conclusions. For example, people may draw on accessible information in a biased manner to uphold positive self-evaluations. Drawn accessible information such as recalling a time they acted intelligently rather than foolishly. Recent study examined reliance on such cognitive loopholes when self-enhancing. Participants evaluated themselves in comparisons to their average peer on broad talent intelligence versus narrow cleanliness, tidiness traits. When making broad inference, people can self-enhance through reliance on goal-relevant availability heuristics because some evidence for their talent or intelligence were likely be available. Narrow inferences afford less opportunity for using such heuristics, constrain positivity biases. Constituent with this idea, participants evaluated themselves as being better than average on broad, but not narrow traits. Further, the degree to which people self-enhance was accompanied by reduced activity in medial lateral obifrontal cortex regions associated with integrating effective and contextual information in the service of decision-making. These findings raise the possibility that people may arrive at flattering views of themselves and choose enclosed others by failing to recruit the OFC. And this may allow goal-relevant heuristics to be easily deployed. This suggests a deeper consideration of desirable and undesirable information may reduce positivity biases. At other times, people shift their attitudes to reduce discomfort with inconsistency. In classic demonstrations, people are asked to make statements or perform behaviors that contradict previously held beliefs, performing a boring task and subsequently telling another participant that the task was enjoyable. Contradictions between one's actions and experience threaten the self-image of the individual as being moral and intelligent, motivated to dispel this threat. People shift their beliefs to make them more consistent with their behavior. Recent neuroscientific evidence sheds light on the process underlying these shifts in belief. In one study, participants were asked to make difficult choices between options they found to be equally attractive and subsequently reevaluate their attitudes towards those options. People evaluate the chosen options as being significantly more desirable than they had before making any choices. Crucially, the degree to which people shifted their attitudes was accompanied by increased activation of the OFC. These findings suggest that shift in attitude is a way to reduce dissonance and threat may be more deliberate than other forms of self-enhancement. So concluding remarks, budding neuroscientific endeavors have begun identifying mechanisms through which motivation affects cognition in various domains, including self-perception, personal perception, intergroup relations. Although often considered separately, these social contexts all activate goals that bias information processing. These motives also pervade information processing at several stages, including visual perception, attention, memory, and decision-making. Motivated cognition highlights the idea that even presumably low-level perceptions and inferences, which at first blush appear to be devoted to objective information gathering or subject to motivational forces. Understanding the structure of motivated cognition is crucial to reducing the harmful sequelae of biased thinking. Strategies that promote deeper information processing can constrain bias. For example, holding people accountable to a third party reduces effortless biases. At other times, when the self is threatened, affirming core values or highlighting shared identity may reduce people's sense of threat as well as restrictive biases in response to that threat. Advances in our understanding of motivated cognition could provide individuals and policymakers with strategies to influence motivation in ways that reduce harmful biases. These strategies may allow people to gain self-insight, maximize adaptive decision-making, as well as to reduce favoritism towards close others and in-group members and improve intergroup relations. That was awesome. Got over a minion. I hope people really appreciated that one. You could click on that and follow the studies. You know, that was a good overview of the current knowledge of cognition on attention and motivation. So awesome stuff. I'm glad people are enjoying this and let's keep going. So I am going to be talking about linguistics soon, so let me save this. I was hoping to so these ones are interesting. They're a little mathematical and I got a lot of there's a lot of stuff that we got to get through. And saying, just to get to this concept of consciousness, there's so much precursor information, it's almost overwhelming. So the only way to do it is, you know, just to start. So here's the next study. Neil Seth, who we've seen before, causal density and integrated information of measurements of conscious level. 2011. An outstanding challenge of neuroscience is to develop theoretically grounded and practically applicable qualitative measures that are sensitive to conscious levels. Such measures should be high for vivid, alert, conscious wakefulness and low for unconscious states such as dreamless sleep, coma, and general anesthesia. Here we describe recent progress in the development of measures of dynamic complexity, in particular causal density and integrated information. These are similar measures capture in different ways the extent to which a system's dynamics are simultaneously differentiated and integrated because conscious senses are distinguished by the same dynamic features. These measures are therefore good candidates for reflecting conscious level. After reviewing the theoretical background, we present new stimulation, simulation results demonstrating similarities and differences between the measures, and we will discuss remaining challenges in the practical application of the measures to empirically obtain data. So just how to measure what qualifies as data for the scientific understanding of the brain. And we're going to talk about causal density, integrated information simulations. The objective for conscious science is to develop and test what can be called explanatory correlates. Neural processes that not only correlate with, but also account for fundamental properties of conscious experience. One such property is that conscious scenes are simultaneously integrated, experienced all of one piece and differentiated. They're composed of many different parts, such as each conscious scene is one among a vast repertoire of possible scenes. Having a measure of conjoined integration and differentiation called dynamic complexity in neural dynamics could account for this fundamental property of consciousness in much the same way that measures of synchrony and coherence may account for and not merely correlate with the minding of different modulities in visual perception. Such measures would most readily apply to conscious level position on a scale from total unconsciousness as in brain death or coma to full or awake consciousness. Rather than conscious contents, the components of quality comprising a given conscious scene, through extension to the latter case, represents an important objective. Over recent years, several measurements of dynamic complexity have been proposed and related to consciousness. These include neural complexity, causal density, and integrated information. However, convincing application of these measures to experimental data remains challenging. I am this paper is to review the theoretical underpinning causal density and integrated information emphasizing recent work encouraging practical applications. We described simulations investigating the relationships between different measures. And we discussed some remaining obstacles to their efficient and interpretal use in common neural imaging contexts such as magno-electro encephalography, MEEG, and functional magnetic resonance imaging, FMRI. So this one's pretty mathematical. You just wanted to show people the complexity of understanding the brain. Causal density, Granger causality in univariate causal density. Causal density is a measure of the overall causal interactivity sustained by a system. It leverages the econometric concept of Granger causality, which is a measure of causal influence based on a time series inference. This is highly mathematical. Encourage people who are capable to read through this and study it more. You'll show the direction of what real brain study looks like. High values will only be achieved when elements behave somewhat differently from each other in order to contribute novel potential predictive information and at the same time are globally integrated so that a potential predictive information is in fact useful. A multivariate G causality and extended causal density. As with most time series measure, G causality is tenderly assessed between single univariate variables, perhaps conditioned on a set of other variables. However, relevant causal interactions within a system may take place between groups of variables. For example, in neural systems, one may wish to examine causal interactions among Hebbian ensembles of neurons or at a macroscopic level among networks of regions of interest. Distributed through the brain, more generally measured variables observables are constrained by methods of data acquisition. It need not map cleanly onto explanatory relevant decompositions of the studied systems. So complicated mathematics. The two final remarks about causal density. First, because MVGC has a spectral decomposition. Both CD and BCD can be evaluated within specific frequency bands, which could be useful in cases where such bands have distinct neurophysiological interpretation. Second, any complex system, it is usually possible to sample only a subset of relevant variables, which can lead to spurious causal inferences arising from hidden common causes. One approach to this problem is the partial out hidden influences by analogy with partial correlation by introducing an additional term in the Granger equation that is sensitive to correlations among residuals. Transfer entropy, common criticism of G causality is that the standard implementations in terms of linear environment models apparently exclude sensitivity to nonlinear interactions. So complicated stuff, encourage people to study this. Neural complexity is relation to causal density. And you obviously, you know, this involves high-level physics. Integrated information, an alternative information theoretic approach to measuring dynamic complexity has been developed by Giulio Tonino-Tonani under the banner of the Information Integration Theory of Consciousness. The IATC, Information Integration Theory of Consciousness identifies conscious level with the quality of integrated information generated by a system. Several versions of the integrated information have now been described. The first was conceived as a measure of the capacity of a system to integrate information. However, did not take into account time or changing dynamics. A more recent version was designed to measure the information generated when a system transitions to one particular state out of a repertoire of possible states. So to the extent that the information is generated by the whole system over and above that generated independently by the parts. However, integrated information is defined only for idealized discrete Markovian memoryless systems. An in-principle restriction that severely limits impracticality because neural systems are often measured using continuous variables and often have memory dynamics that depend on more than just the previous state. So, you know, breakdown of these theories. Hope that there's people who have the ability to read through this and study it, and we'll discuss this more. Use high-level mathematics to understand what's going on here. Logical representation. And then simulations of what we just talked about, where the computer will simulate these neural networks. Examine general trends and behavior, the measures as a function of connection density. We perform the following procedures 100 times, starting with fully disconnected network of N equals eight elements in which each element has only a self-connection. We filled the connectivity matrix in a random order. Each time a connection was added, connection strengths were normalized such that there was a constant total affront to each element and all connections to a given element were equal. And you use the computer simulates to see what might happen in the brain. So additional simulations. Reworking some of the variables. Taking together, these simulations indicate that both CD and integrated information track non-trivial properties of network topology and dynamics as suggested by the theoretical formulation consistent with intuition. CD is sensitive to dynamical regime in between dependence of elements, a strong correlation among elements. Integrated information also shows a disassociation from overall correlation, at least when networks are normalized by spectral density. So the discussion, we describe measures of dynamic complexity based on causal density and integrated information, which are easily applicable to time series data which are theoretically grounded in reflecting conjoint functioning differential and functioning integration. The grounding encouraged their use. The grounding encouraged their use as potential measures of conscious level. Given neural data contrasting normal waking consciousness on consciousness, conscious condition including dreamless sleep, general anesthesia, coma, the vegetative state, epilepsy, and perhaps even certain psychiatric disorders. Measures of causal density are based on predictive ability among time series operation using G causality and they attempt to capture the overall amount of causal interactivity exhibited by a system. We've described causal density measures, CD and BCD, which characterize respectively overall causal interactivity between pairs of elements conditioned on the rest of the system and overall causal interactivity between bipartitions of a system. Measures of integrated information reflect the extent to which information generated by the whole system exceeds that generated by its parts. So comparison among measures. So causal density, CD, integrated information and neural complexity embeddy theoretical differences that have empirical consequences as revealed in our simulations. At the theoretical level, measures of integrated information differ from measures of causal density most prominently in that the former are based on a value of effective information across a single partition. Whereas the latter are based on values across averaged across the whole system. The former approach guarantees that a disconnected system will not score positive but raises problems in stability in systems that have several partitions with similar normalizations but different non-normalizations. In previous work, we have discovered examples. So pretty intense simulation results support the intuitions underlying causal density and integrated information while emphasizing that the measures can behave differently. Examine two sets of simulations, both which involve ensembles and networks parameterized by overall connection density with connections arranged at random. Simulations differed primarily by using different normalization factors. First set maintained a constant affront to each element. The second set normalized by spectral radius. First set found that as connection to density increased, CD and BCD peaked after the network became connected but became the overall correlation among network elements before the overall correlation among other network elements reached its maximum. By contrast. But with practical applications, despite the theoretical advances describing this paper, applications of causal density and integrated information to neural data remains challenging for several reasons. For numerical ease, calculation direction from empirical covariance matrices, the data must be covariance. Stationary means that variances must remain constant over time. However, neural data are often noisy and contaminated by artifacts and drift, introducing non-stationary is non-stationary data can sometimes be made stationary by differentiating repeatedly if necessary. Alternatively, one can analyze shorter time windows, each of which may be locally stationary. From some types of data like MEEG, vanpasser or other notch building are commonly used in order to remove artifacts and drift. Neural signals are frequently nonlinear as well as non-stationary while information theoretical measures are naturally nonlinear. The models are typically estimated by linear models. Neural data relevant to conscious level are typically obtained from neural imaging methods such as MEEG and FMRI. Each method poses its own distinctive challenges. MEEG signals offer high temporal resolution suitable for time series analysis. However, they require non-unique inverse modeling to remove to move from sensor space at the scalp to the underlying source space, conferring ambiguity in subsequent interpretations. The spatial resolution of the EEG is also low as compared to FMRI. And additional challenges related to filtering have already been mentioned. FMRI contrasts with MEEG by offering high spatial resolution at the expense of temporal resolution. The blood oxygen level dependent signal measured by FMRI reflects slow metabolic processes related to neural activity. These relations remain incompletely understood and typically sampled in the order of point three to one hertz. The corresponding parts time series posed challenges for accurate estimations of AR models and even covariance matrices. Moreover, variability in hemodynamic responses in different brain regions and different subjects make and found causal inference undermining subsequently derived complexity measures. However, causal inference based on FMRI time series is an area of extremely active research, promising new approaches are emerging. For example, embedded AR models into state space models that are include hemodynamic parameters and integrating perturbation approaches using transcranial magnetic stimulation. So the final conclusions. William James recently described consciousness as a stream of processes. The measure of dynamic complexity describing this paper causal density are consistent with this view because these measures depend on the stationary statistics of an underlying neural dynamic when considered as potential measures of conscious level they imply. The conscious level is constant during each stationary epoch in brain activity. The conscious level changes when functional connectivity changes modifying the stationary statistics. Despite sharing a common ground and emphasizing dynamic complexity, this perspective is different from the one advocated by the IATC. According to the IATC, consciousness is best characterized as a potential or capacity in virtue of reliance on the maximum entry distribution. A challenging implication of this property is that conscious experience is modulated by states the brain never in fact encounters. If these states are part of maximum entropy but not the stationary distribution. Another feature of the IATC is that integrated information is identified with consciousness implying a relation of sufficiency. In our view, dynamic complexity, information integration may be necessary but is unlikely to be sufficient for generating consciousness. The challenge of the IATC in this context is that all measures of integrated information so far described exhibit instabilities due to normalization undermining the description of physical meaning to the quantity. Differences among various measures describing this paper underscore the importance of operationalizing intuitive properties of the target phenomenon. In this case, consciousness, as we have seen, similar intuition can be operationalized in significantly different ways, carrying a major implication, not just for practical applicability but also for underlying theoretical principles. Future challenges lie in the continuing this program of operationalization for other fundamental properties of consciousness such as existence of first person perspective, the shaping conscious content by mood, volition and agency, the sense of subjective reality. At the same time, additional theory and modeling is needed to fully disclose the relation among integrated information, causal density and neural complexity and to understand how these qualities are affected by embedded in neural system with the sense of motor loop involved in generating behavior. But the most pressing concern is to close the gap between theory and practice to examine whether theoretically grounded measures such as those described here offer additional empirical purchase in virtue of and not in spite of their theoretical properties. Okay, so you still here? Down to six people. I don't see anyone active in the chat, but I hope a few people are listening and enjoying this good stuff, you know, read through these papers. You have seen this PowerPoint slides, get these ideas in your head and then get through these papers. And you know, people who did the speed reading, hope you're reading along some of these studies and I'm reading more studies than what I'm reading through. These are ones that yeah, I found good enough to read the whole thing through word by word. And you know, so we're trying to get to the problem of understanding consciousness, you know, it's pretty complicated. So let's look at one more study. I got a smaller audience and I'll do some, then if I have strength, I'll do linguistics. Okay, this also has a Neil Seth. He's an expert on the subject, 2015. Merging neuroscience theories of consciousness suggested a correlation. So this one's gonna be from and anesthetic studies, complexity of multi-dimensional spontaneous EEG decreases during propofol induced generic anesthesia. Urging neural theories of consciousness selects the correlation between a specific type of neural dynamic cold complexity and the level of consciousness. When awake and aware, causal interactions between brain regions are both integrated. All regions are to a certain extent connected and differentiated. There is inhomogeneity and variety in the inner actions in support of this work. Recent work by has shown that Lempel-Ziv complexity correlates strongly with conscious level. When computing the EEG response to transcranial magnetic stimulation, here we investigate a complexity of spontaneous A is the high density EEG data during propofol induced general anesthesia. We consider three distinct measures, the Lempel-Ziv complexity, which is derived from how comprehensive the data are, amplitude coalition entropy, which measures the viability in the constitution of the set of active channels and novel synchrony coalition entropy, which measures the variety ability in the constitution of the set of synchronous channels. After some simulations on Coromodo oscillator models, which demonstrate that these measures capture distinct flavors of complexity, we show that there is a robust measurable decrease in complexity of spontaneous EEG during general anesthesia. Awesome stuff. Give myself a little rest here. Doing a lot of reading. Okay, so I hope a few people are able to follow these studies and maybe have some good information. The idea that the level and range of consciousness relates in some way to a dynamic complexity and brain activity is becoming increasingly prominent. Common way to conceptualize dynamic complexity in this setting is a simultaneous differentiation. Subset of the systems being dynamically distinct and integration of the system as a whole exhibiting coherence. As this idea draws from what is taken to be fundamental property of conscious experience, namely that each conscious scene is composed of many different parts and is different from every other conscious scene. Differentiation, yet each conscious scene is experienced as a coherent whole integration. Number of different measures of neural dynamic complexity have been produced based on information sharing and transfer. Properties of these measures have been explored in simple models. For instance, neural network activity of artificial agents. However, these measures based on information sharing and transfer rely on restrictive assumptions such as stationarity and linearity. They limit the consciousness that can be drawn when applied to the real brain data. A series of recent studies take a more pragmatic approach to investigating the relationships between consciousness and complexity. Studies have investigated for subjects in diverse states of consciousness like wakeful rest, deep sleep, general anesthesia, EEG responses to transcranial magnetic stimulation. It has been found that when subjects are unconscious, the response is stereotypical across electrodes and remains local to the site of stimulation. Whereas when subjects are conscious, the response differs between electrodes and spreads across the whole cortex. In this way, the extent of both differentiation and integration is greater when the subject is conscious. Simple measure of complexity based on the lack of comprehensibility of the EEG responses qualified for the Lempel-Ziv algorithm was developed for this data. So we investigated three simple measures of complexity of a multi-dimensional spontaneous studies, the EEG data. The methods, ethic statement. Spontaneous your data was preprocessed, followed first epics of recording complete channels that showed obvious artifacts were rejected by visual inspection artifacts channels. So this is going to be pretty intense about how they looked at all this EEG data to develop you know, this determination of their integration and differentiation. These, you kind of like what we talked about, the soft problem, the hard problem and the value of the different processes put together in the whole picture. A given set of data Lempel-Ziv complexity quantifies complexity by counting the number of distinct patterns of activity in the data. It can be thought as being proportional to the size the computer file containing the data. After applying a compression algorithm, computing the Lempel-Ziv compressibility of data requires a binarization of multi-dimensional time series. So coalition entropy measures, the idea of coalition entropy is introduced by Shanahan. Its original form measures the entropy over time of the constitution of the set and channels that are active, given a binarization scheme for classifying channels is either active or inactive. A lot of data here, you know, a lot of mathematics. I just want to show you these most recent models for trying to show brain or thought arising from the brain and understanding what all these neurons could do. And you know, so largely this is kind of like electrical engineering. And you know, pulling out data from the patterns and hopefully we will get more into this. And you know, so why there's all this precursor information and why the topic of consciousness is oftentimes overwhelming to people. We got grouping EEG into lobes to access whether changes in complexity during LOC occurred across the whole cortex or whether more local changes could be identified. We analyzed the measures of each of the four lobes separately. The electrodes were divided into four groups. Each corresponds to one of the four main anatomical lobes, temporal, cippital, frontal and parietal. With each lobe, 25 channels were automatically chosen via K. So let's see the discussion. We analyzed three different complexity measures of spontaneous EEG data from subjects undergoing protocol induced generic anesthesia. Combined several approaches to verify the different capture. The spectral changes between state, we found that renormalization, the measures by values obtained after phase randomization did not affect the results. In addition, when comparing the discriminative power of the three complexity measures with the normalized spectral power, we found that the normalization delta power discriminated between the states. Consistently ever finding across the four cortical lobes. So I encourage people to read this. This is extremely technical and you know, so you know, summary, we have demonstrated correlation between the level of sedation and three distinct complexity measures during protocol induced general anesthesia, testing the measures on data from other manipulations of conscious level, we build up a more complete indication of the specificity and sensitivity of these measures to the level of consciousness associated with diverse states. And also whether they can act synergistically with other indices. Since we did not find any complexity measure to correlate significantly, we've dealt the power, we expect the complexity measures to combine synergistically with a course analysis of the power spectrum. This would be in line with recent work analyzing auditory evoke potentials in EG from traumatic brain injury patients. Combine spectral measures with measures of the complexity of a single time series to achieve greater discriminate power as measured the area under the ROT curve by classifying the states traumatic brain injury patients. Other theory based indices that could be explored in conjunction with the complexity measures described here include causal density, various versions of integrating information. Integration measures based on long range functional connectivity such as weighted symbolic mutation informations, integrated measures based on microstate properties across channels of spontaneous EEG. So now a number of candidate neuro correlates to consciousness. We have added to the list multi-dimensional complexity of spontaneous EEG measures derived from theory and thus explanatory correlates and quick and easy to compute and do not involve the need to stimulate or perturb the brain. These are extremely complicated studies that are trying to, you know, how do you actually, you know, billions and billions of neurons? How do you really map these things and try to build a picture of what is consciousness from such a complex network and hence these highly mathematical understandings of what's going on? I'm gonna try to move on to the linguistics. So because there's so much to cover. Let's keep it going. So I got you know, these PowerPoints and linguistics, lot of information. Lot to know. Okay. So put this back on screen share. And I'm gonna keep on streaming. Sorry for the, sorry for the dead time. Okay, sorry about that. Hope I'm not losing too many people. Shows I got seven people watching. Sorry for the dead time. No one's in the chat. And I'm gonna re-enter screen share and go over some linguistics, you know, so that you know, language. go over some linguistics, you know, so that, you know, language, how the mind creates language, you know, the, whether it's a biological function. And, you know, recover like Noam Chomsky, famous Chomsky, there's a lot of information here and, you know, a lot of relevance. So you hear is simple AP psychology training for high school, you'd get a little information cognition, thinking, problem solving, creativity and language. Solving problem strategies, you got algorithms, step-by-step heuristics, insight, creativity, Sternberg's five components of creativity, expertise, imaginative thinking skills, adventure, some personality, intrinsic motivation, creative environment, obstacles to problem solving, confirmation bias, fixation, mental set, functional fixedness. Either representative heuristic, the availability heuristic, overconfidence, belief perseverance. What's intuition, unconscious intuition, all these concepts, you're framing, how do we frame things? And all these things are also related to language. So we talk about consciousness, you're saying with voice in our head, but what language is that voice in our head? What is the process of thought? Is there a representational form of thought? Is language that representational form of thought is something different? So you have a phoneme about, you know, phonetic units. Morphine, your prefix and suffixes, grammar, you know, semantics and syntax. Children, you go through the babbling stage, one-word stage, two-word stage, telegraphic speech. The, you know, age periods, nice little charts showing the age period. Learning principles, association, imitation, reinforcement. Chomsky comes up with his inborn universal grammar, language acquisition device, universal grammar, which is either, you know, you could look at it from the soul, but he looks at evolutionary terms of the brain has this inborn program that makes it easier for people to learn language. Your critical periods and children's growth. And, you know, some of the definitions here cognition, mental activities associated with thinking, knowing, remembering, communicating, concept and mental grouping of similar objects, events, ideas or people. Prototype, a mental image or best example of a category matching new items to a photo, a prototype provides a quick and easy method for sorting items into categories. Algorithm, a methodological logical rule or procedure that guarantees pro solving a particular problem contrasts with the usual speedier, but also more error-prone use of heuristics. The heuristic, simple thinking strategy that often allows us to make judgments and solve problems. Efficiently, usually speedier, but has more error prone than algorithms. Insight sudden, often novel realization of the solution to a problem. Contrast with strategy-based solutions. Creativity, ability to produce novel and valuable ideas. Confirmation bias, bias tendency to search for information that supports our preconceptions and to ignore or distort contradictory evidence. Fixation and ability to see a problem from a new perspective by employing a different mental state. Mental set tendency to approach a problem in one particular way, often a way that has been successful in the past. Functional fixedness tendency to think of things only in terms of their usual functions and impediment to problem solving. Representativeness heuristic, judging the likelihood of things in terms of how well they seem to represent or match particular prototypes may lead us to ignore other relevant information. Availability heuristic estimating the likelihood of events based on the availability in memory. If instances come readily to mind, we presume such events are common. Overconfidency, overconfidence tend to be more confident than correct, that correct. To overestimate the accuracy of our beliefs and judgments, belief perseverance, clinging to one's initial conception after the bias basis on which they are formed has been discredited intuition effortless, immediate automatic feeling of thought as contrasted with explicit conscious reasoning, framing the way an issue is posed. How an issue is framed can significantly affect decisions and judgments. Language are spoken, written or assigned words. And the way we combine them to communicate meaning phoneme, language is smallest distinctive sound unit. Morphine in language is smallest unit that carries meaning, maybe a word or part of a word. Grammar in language, a system of rules that enables us to communicate with and understand others. Semantics, the set of rules by which we derive meaning from morphemes, words and sentences in a given language, also the study of meaning. Syntax, the rules for combining words into grammatically sensible sentences in a given language. Babbling stage beginning about four months, the stage of speech development in which the infant spontaneously utters various sounds at first unrelated to the household language. One-word stage, stage, speech development from age one to two, during which a child speaks mostly in single words. And then beginning at the age of two, stage and speech development during which a child speaks mostly two-word statements. And then telegraphic speech, early speech state in which the child speaks like a telegram go-kart using mostly nouns and verbs. Linguistic determinism warps hypothesis that language determines the way we think. So a lot of stuff here on linguistics. And you appreciate people coming and enjoying the show again and and keep on going with these PowerPoints. Noam Chomsky nativism. You know, linguistics, Noam Chomsky, it's where, how he became famous, some of the most profound ideas of the 20th century. Nativism. What is the cognitive code? Is an infant born with complete world knowledge like Plato had assumed? We know infants count concepts of object, physical concepts, language. The evidence for the claim of a complete world knowledge youngsters learn an extremely complex system of language relatively effortless youngsters youngsters learn extremely complex system in a short amount of time and they do not need instruction to learn their mother tongue. What about infants who are born deaf or impoverished language? Development of Creole from pigeon. If they don't hear, you know, there's a lot of evidence will be talking about this. So Fordham's learning paradox, one learns something only if they know in advance to learn a language, you have to know that language in advance. What you know is at a higher level than what you learn. So according to Chomsky, infants are born with a universal grammar, a database, a grammar, language acquisition device. Also, if a child's born with a language acquisition device and no universal grammar, he doesn't have anything to hypothesize on. If a child's born with universal grammar and no language acquisition device, he cannot hypothesize about the language. So UG is this cognitive code unique to humans, universal to all humans. Although no one has been able to crack this code. So Chomsky, one cannot construct more powerful structures because hypothesis testing cannot take place at a level that is higher than one's highest level. Conversation, a child cannot hypothesize conversation if he is at the intuitive stage. So PJ, he doesn't have to accept hypothesis testing as the mechanism for learning. He believes children learn and develop through disequilibrium. Describes learning and development in child development, Antigeni. His system allows him to describe two disparate developments, Antigi and historical development. So the nativist cannot describe the development of disciplines and history in terms of innate modules within humans. The bottom line PJ describes two developments as opposed to one. So within nativism, the modularity of encapsulation, unconscious speed, shallow units encapsulation is impossible to infer interfere with the inner workings of the module unconscious is difficult or impossible to reflect on operations of module. Speed modules are very fast, shallow outputs modules provide limited output without information about the intervening steps that led to that output. Obligatory firing modules operate reflexively, providing predetermined outputs for predetermined inputs regarding regardless of the context. Antigenetic universals modules develop in a characteristic sequence localization modules are mediated by dedicated neural systems. Pathological universals modules break down in characteristics fashion following insult to the system domain specificity. So that was kind of loose, just a bunch of terms and definition of terms. So let's keep it going, you know, saying just get these terms out there. So language, mind and social interaction. Linguistics is the scientific study of human language regards the ways in which members of a particular discourse community conceptualize their experience encoded into a linguistic form and then use that code in social interaction. Language powerfully conditions all of our thinking about social problems and processes. This explains why the systematic study of language necessarily regards both cognition, the way in which language structured thoughts in the human mind and communication, the way in which language serves a social interaction. Indeed, as we acquire language during childhood, we also discover our identity as individuals when we use it to refer to ourselves and our ideas, our identity as social beings when we communicate with other people. This is why linguistics has a significant impact on different disciplines such as sociology, cognitive psychology, anthropology, philosophy, language, learning and teaching, neuroscience, artificial intelligence. Cognitive psychology is the basis of the psycholinguistic view developed by Noam Chomsky. Sociology, on the other hand, informs the social linguistic view advanced by Michael Halliday. So language is cognition. Chomsky's transformational generative grammar, the aim of linguistics is not simply to focus on our language is structured. In fact, he's principally interested in understanding more about language in order to understand more about the processes of the human mind. Chomsky starts from the observation that although different groups of people speak different languages, all human languages are similarly governed by common rules or principles that are universal. Every language has rules that govern pronunciation, word formation, sentence construction, providing a means for making assertions or requests, asking questions and so on. This means that languages differ from each other only at a level of their surface structure, but their deep structure is the same, reflecting the general rules of a universal linguistic systems typically of human species. Universal linguistic system is genetically endowment of all human beings. Chomsky defines as innate language acquisition device genetically programmed in the human brain. The lad provides a series of common grammatical principles or universal grammar and their realizations as variable parameters to be adapted to the varying settings of the different languages. The presence of the language acquisition device in the human brain would explain why language development in children occurs so easily and spontaneously and does not require an explicit teaching of the grammar rules on the parts of the adults, moreover, children are extremely creative in their use of language because they can say and understand words and sentences that they've never heard before. To Chomsky's perspective, therefore, language is exclusively a cognitive abstract knowledge developing in the human mind completely detached from the context in which it is used. This in fact represents another way of looking at language, that is, as a socially motivated system developed to allow social communication. So language is communication, Halliday's systematic functional grammar. The purpose of linguistics is concerned with the study of language as a social semiotic. That is, say, a system of signs that have been developed to serve the communicative needs of people living in a social context. So in other words, Halliday intends language not as biological evolution of the human beings, beings, brain as Chomsky is nativism, but as a social cultural evolution prompted by the human beings need to communicate with each other within their own communities. This means that language has evolved with a specific community in such a way that it fills three main functions. The ideation function concerned with people thinking with language in order to interpret experience. The interpersonal function concerned with people acting with language in order to achieve interpersonal communication. And the textual function concerned with the linguistic organization of a message. These functions in Halliday's view are realized differently in different languages because they are coded in semantic and syntactic structures that reflect the different social semiotic in different communities. Within each community, the semantic and syntactic code representing the grammatical systems of its language allows the expression of the social behavior of people using it in various situational contexts. Within the grammatical resources of their code, people are free to choose those structures that best convey their expressive and communicative intents. So Chomsky states that linguistics should regard exclusively an abstract knowledge of language, which he defines as competence. Then he disassociates competence from actual use of language or performance. Contrary to this bill view, Delhimes argues that language is not simply an abstract ideal as knowledge of rules, but is also the use of these rules to achieve communication, communicative competence. So Gump, Hertz and Levitzen claim that the rules of use in the various languages are different because they reflect on different social cultural experiences of their users linguistic relatively, that is, the idea that culture through language affects the way we think, especially our classification of the experienced world. So the experience perspective, a more recent cognitive functional approach to grammar informed by the experientialist view and cognitive linguistics succeeded in bringing together these two theories under a common rationale. The cognitive functional linguist language is systematically grounded in human cognition since it is a conceptual system that emerges from people's everyday experience of their own physical and social cultural environments. The language and social cultural contexts. Now we shall start by examining language variation and how it is conventionally classified into varieties, dialects and accents. Variety is the general variations occurring within the code of the same language. Dialects are local, regional varieties that differ from the standard language code in relation to morphology, lexicon, syntax and phonology. Accents are regional varieties of the language that differ from the standard code only in relation to phonology. Variations in accents has a social dimension and this is often defined in terms of social status and prestige of the speakers. Language variation therefore can be summarized into diatopic variation depending on the place where it occurs. Distracted variation depending on the social status of its speakers. And diaphastic variation related to the pragmatic dimension, the linguistic style of register differs according to the situational context in which the communication takes place. Diamesis variation depending on the communication means or channels. And diachronic variation related to the historic development of a language. Okay, good stuff, a lot of information here. I studied linguistics for years in school. I almost got my undergraduate degree in linguistics at Stony Brook and you know, so consciousness and language are very related. You, I hadn't, I introduced linguistics briefly, but linguistics will play a common role in trying to understand. So let's get into what is this universal grammar, cognitive grammar. Cognitive approaches to grammar, theory is a grammar that relate grammar to mental processes and structures in human cognition. Noam Chomsky and Spello generative grammarians grammar is an autonomous mental faculty is governed by mental processes of operating on mental representations of different kinds of symbols that apply only within the faculty. Proponents of cognitive linguistics grammar is not an autonomous mental faculty with processes of his own, but is intertwined with all other cognitive processes and structure. Basic claims that grammar is a conceptualization. Some of the theories that fall within this paradigm, construction grammar, cognitive grammar and word grammar. The symbolic theses, the basic unit of grammar is a form meaning pairing term variously a symbolic assembly. So you have a unit, you're like a cat. You know, going back to like Plato's forms, the debate between Plato and Aristotle, relationship between semantic phonological and symbolic units. Cognitive approaches to grammar, guiding principles, the uses-based theses. There is an innate relationship between the grammar defined as the mental repository of symbolic units and language use. Nice diagram, phonological space. Inventory-based theories, your cognitive grammar, construction grammar. You Fillmore Goldberg embodied construction, radical construction and grammatical subsystem-based theories, the theory conceptual structuring systems, grammatic utilization theory. So the study symbolic units which comprise language, you have the study of language as a structure inventory of units, construction grammar and the study of cognitive principles and mechanisms which structure and give rise to the units of language cognitive grammar. So nice flow chart to a cognitive model. So characteristics of the cognitive approach to grammar, the ultimate aim of cognitive approach is to model speaker knowledge in ways which are consistent with the two key commitments which underlie the cognitive linguistic enterprise. Generalization commitment, a commitment to the characterization of general principles which are responsible for all aspects of human language categorization, polysemmy metaphor cognitive commitment, a commitment to providing a characterization of general principles for language which accords with what is known about the mind and brain from other disciplines, attention categorization metaphor. And you have the generalization commitment of lexicology, morphology and syntax and attention. You know, all these related to word choice and interrelated. So Ling, Lingacre's cognitive grammar attention is intrinsically associated with the intensity of energy levels of cognitive processes, which translates experientially into greater prominence or salience. Their focal adjustments linguistic expressions relate to conceived. Their focal adjustments, linguistic expressions relate to conceived situations or scenes, the concepts employed to structure. Conceived situations can vary along the three parameters, selection, perspective, and abstraction. By choosing particular focal adjustments and hence organizing a scene in a particular way through language, the speaker or hearer provides a particular construal of the scene in question. So, focal adjustments in terms of selection, perspective, and abstraction, giving rise to construals. So, selection, focal adjustments, the selection determine which aspects of a scene are being dealt with. You have conceptual domain, a body of knowledge within our conceptual system that contain and organize related ideas and experience. So, the basic conceptual domains according to Lingacre. So, basic domain could be space, color, pitch, temperature, pressure, pain, odor, time, and emotion. And the pre-conceptual basis like space could be determined from vision, touch, kinesthesia, color by vision, pitch by hearing, temperature, touch and somathesia, pressure, touch, kinesthesia and somathesia, pain, touch and somathesia, odor, smell, time, temporal awareness, emotion, affective system. So, profiling, the conceptualization designed by linguistic utterance constitutes its profile. A focal point, however, a particular focal point is always prominent with respect to a particular context. This constitutes profile-based organization. So, open class subsystem and closed class subsystem. Perspective relates to the position from which a scene is viewed with consequences from the relative prominence of its participants. You have projector and landmark. In an action chain, projector, T R, and landmark, L M, organization relates to the participants in a profile relationship where the projector constitutes the focal participant, the landmark constitutes the secondary. You know, viewpoint, the perspective and orientation taken on a scene provides a different way of construing it from the perspective of the agent or patient as an active-passive distinction. So, abstraction, abstraction relates to the degree of specificity at which a scene is portrayed. So, language is cognitive grammar. You had force dynamics, called active zone, energy flow, energy source, energy sync. Examples. The human cognitive system is built upon the basis of a whole complex structure. But on the surface level of linguistic structure, details are backgrounded or visualized only in the brain, but not explicitly expressed in speech. So, you know, what we've been studying cognition is probably best understood through linguistics. Linguistic is probably the most developed of the conscious sciences. And, you know, but there's, you know, how does that relate to neural activity? So, all these studies are very interesting, and they have this important concept of language acquisition. Your Chomsky is the nativist, how do we learn a language? Is it come from the soul possibly? You know, which isn't really scientific these days. So, you know, is it the nature or nurture basically would be the scientific argument, although I would esoterically presume that you could understand almost all of these concepts in terms of the soul. Let's look, this is a graduate-level course in language acquisition. And I took a graduate-level course in language acquisition. It's phenomenal. One of the probably the greatest topics out there, you know, linguistics, how do we acquire language? And we'll be looking at second language acquisition, adult language learning, and all these related topics that are very integral to consciousness. So, I mean, you see the wide variety of, you know, sense perception that we need to understand consciousness, and then the different types of thought in the conceptualization, putting all these different things together. That's why, you know, it's probably going to be tens of hours that I'm going to be doing this to really get a good ground of all the different aspects that come into psychology, to, um, the study of consciousness. Darwin kept diaries of his children's development. Um, you know, so we looked at this before in kind of the history of idea development, and there have been the keeping of diaries. At some point in Europe, it became very popular. So, we have two ideas, that children have specialized domain-specific knowledge about how language works. Or children domain-general cognitive processes allowed them to acquire language. Chomsky revolution, synthetic structures, innovation. What speakers do is not as interesting as the mental grammar that underlies what speakers do. So, if adults have a mental grammar that explains what they do when they talk, children must have a mental grammar that explains what children do when they talk. New formation of language development. What are children's grammars like, and how do they eventually achieve adult grammars? So, current approaches, language is a complex cognitive system that maps sounds to meanings. One idea of the mechanism behind this process, language acquisition device. Unconscious process inside the child's mind, used only for learning a language. So, the linguistic approach, the premises of language acquisition device contains some domain-specific knowledge specifically about human language, about the structure of language, often called universal grammar, the focused description of children's prior innate linguistic knowledge, and how that knowledge interacts with the data from a native language to produce knowledge of the native language. So, you have the language acquisition device, coupled with information from the environment, the basic premise. The language acquisition device provides a little bit of knowledge about how human language works to get the child started. This allows the child to use their language input more effectively, to notice certain things more easily, and to entertain only certain hypothesis about how language works. So, why do children need this head start? So, input is too impoverished for children to converge on right language rules without it specifically. The input is compatible with other hypotheses about how language could work. This is sometimes what's called the poverty of the stimulus, and I have a whole study on the poverty of the stimulus that probably won't read today. So, children need something else besides the data and the input to help them rule out these other hypotheses. So, current approach is language is a complex system that maps sound to meaning. Another idea is the mechanism behind the process, general learning abilities. So, domain general cognitive approach. Language acquisition is no different from any other kind of knowledge acquisition. Children can solve this problem in the same way that they solve other problems like perception. So, the description of domain general learning capacities that serve language development and the source of input those capacities use. Abilities that are useful for other kinds of input besides language input are used to learn language. There's no knowledge or ability that is unique to language learning. Maybe children don't need domain-specific knowledge to learn language. Maybe they just use the data available to them more cleverly than some researchers think so. There's studies. Eight-month-olds can unconsciously track probabilities between syllables in order to identify words in fluent speech in an artificial language. Nature was nurture. Development of language in children, the result of humans innate endowment like upright posture and bipedal locomotion, or as a result of circumstances in which church children are nurtured. Empiricism, all knowledge and reason come from experience, and nativism, mind has some pre-existing structure it imposes to interpret experience. So, like we discussed, what's some of the evidence for nativism? Children acquire language rapidly with little conscious effort, without explicit instruction for most of it. Chomsky, language learning is not really something that the child does, it is something that happens to a child placed in an appropriate environment, much as the child body grows and matures in a predetermined way when provided with appropriate nutrition and environmental stimulation. The interactionist construction of his view, you get snow. We're on the other side, think that learning language is a long slog which requires from the child a lot of work, and the child's working as hard as he can, fifteen, sixteen hours a day. We think it requires a relationship with an adult and a whole set of cognitive beliefs. The actual construction of language is constructed by a child from experience, and the input is crucial, but there may still be some innate knowledge contributing, contribution. So, from the nativist perspective, the knowledge itself is innate, procedures for learning are innate. So, children have inborn knowledge of the general form of language, domain-specific knowledge, and procedures for learning are innate. Children have domain-general capacities that all contribute to language acquisition, such as symbolic representations, memory, segmenting input into smaller parts, and pattern analysis. So, babies, more studies, same study before. Give the generativist and the constructivist. Generativist, universal grammar, which contains biases for language structure is innate. Languages experience triggers prior knowledge, which is domain-specific. And the constructivist, language is constructed by a child using general cognitive learning procedures applied to a language input. These are domain-general abilities used for language learning. On the map, you know, so from learned to innate and domain-specific to domain-general. Yeah, so you see where the generativist, nativist, empiricist, and constructivist fall. The research methods. You do cross-linguistics and cross-cultural research. Even if a language is universal, there are individual differences in language development, and there may be more than one route to acquisition success. Also, there may be influence from different cultures on the language learning environment for children. Analyzing samples of spontaneous speech from children. It's hard to make claims that children don't use no particular structure based on its absence in spontaneous speech samples. It could be that they simply didn't say that structure when they were being recorded. So, you know, these studies to try to understand this, very difficult to prove linguistics. Coding systems like mean length of utterance, which correlate with measures of children's grammatical and phonological development. This is done by tracking the average number of meaning-bearing units in the child's speech. Use estimates that caregivers provide of children's performance, such as MacArthur-Bates communicative development inventories, like eight to sixteen months, sixteen to thirty months, thirty to thirty-six months, include checklist of words, gestures, and word combinations children use to comprehend. The Peabody picture vocabulary text. Computation modeling, creating computer program that takes the data children hear as input and see if it can learn the same knowledge children do from that input. Usually, the program will implement some learning theory assumptions about how learning work, and therefore test the theory empirically. Learn to identify words in fluent speech. Learning referential meanings such as what one refers to in Look at the Purple Goblin, and there's another one behind. Okay, great stuff. Look at a few articles. Lot of information here. You can see on my screen, I got a lot more coming. So, you know, I really only covered a small fraction of what I wanted to today. I was hoping to cover more, but yeah, this stuff's pretty complicated, and you know, there's really no shortcuts to understanding this. So, I'm probably going to wrap up. I guess, you know, I don't seem to have anyone actively in the chat, so let me read two more papers. And, you know, like, hopefully, I'm going to get somewhere, and maybe these will be, you know, especially with the table of contents. These will be useful moving forward for other people. So, let's look at a quick article on the evolution of universal grammar. You know, this is going to be extremely important. Universal grammar specifies the mechanisms of language acquisition. It determines the range of grammatical hypothesis that children entertain during language learning and the procedure they use for evaluating input sentences. How universal grammar arose is a major challenge for evolutionary biology. We present a mathematical framework for the evolutionary dynamics of grammar learning. The central result is a coherence threshold which specifies the condition for universal grammar to induce coherent communications within a population. We study selection of grammars within the same universal grammar and competition between different universal grammars. We calculate the condition under which natural selection favors the emergence of rule-based generative grammars that underlie complex language. This is all the way back in 2001. So, language consists of words and rules. The finite ensemble of memorized words is called the mental lexicon, wherein the set of rules is called the mental grammar of a person. Grammar is the computational system that is essential for creating infinite expressibility of human language. Children acquire their mental grammar spontaneously and without formal training. Children in the same speech community reliably learn the same grammar. Exactly how the mental grammar comes into a child's mind is a puzzle. Children have to deduce the rules of their native language from sample sentences they receive from parents and others. The information is insufficient for uniquely determining the underlying grammatical principles. Linguists call this phenomenon the poverty of stimulus or the paradox of language acquisition. The proposed solution is universal grammar. Universal grammar consists of a mechanism to generate a search space for all candidate mental grammars and learning a procedure that specifies how to evaluate sample sentences. Universal grammar is not learned, but is required for language learning. It is innate. Most linguists claim that the acquisition of language is done by specifically neuronal circuitry within the brain and not by the general purpose problem-solving ability of the brain. Therefore, it should be possible to observe genetic effects of language acquisition. The emergence of language is a major transition evolution. Language permits efficient transfer of non-genetic information between individuals, and thus leads to a new mode of evolutionary change. We now attempt to explain detailed linguistic properties of human language, but general aspects that are relevant for its evolution and its distinction from animal communication. The key issue of cognitive science and linguistics is the question of how much is innate and how much is learnt in human language. Most attempts to quantify the complexity of universal grammar come from the concept of learnability. The object of the study is the ideal speaker-earer pair in homogenous linguistic community. Here, we consider a heterogeneous population and its evolutionary dynamics. We introduce the notion of grammatical coherence and quantify the condition for universal grammar to induce coherent communication in a population, thus evolutionary considerations in addition to the traditional learning theoretical ones are brought into play in the discourse of the maximum possible complexity of universal grammar. Consider universal grammar, which generates a search space that consists of N candidate grammars. Each grammar is a rule system that defines a set of valid sentences. We have, you know, A, the probability that a speaker uses grammar G, formulates a sentence that is compatible with grammar J. You know, a matrix, so we assume that's a reward for mutual understanding, the payoff for an individual using grammar, using a G communicating with an individual of a different grammar, and the average probability. So, trying to come up with some scientific understanding for how the probability of universal grammar evolving. And I'm not a big fan of evolution. I would prefer to think it's a function of the soul, but, you know, just to see the type direction of current science. So, we now explore the conditions under which natural selection favors the emergence of rule-based recursive grammatical systems with infinite expressibility. In contrast to such rule-based grammars, one might consider list-based grammars that consist only of finite number of sentences. Such list-based grammars can be seen as very primitive evolutionary precursors or alternatives to rule-based grammars. Individuals would acquire their mental grammar not by searching for underlying rules, but by simply memorizing sentence types and their meaning, similar to memorizing the arbitrary meaning of words. List-based grammars do not allow for creativity on the level syntax. Nevertheless, whether or not natural selection favors the more complicated rule-based grammar depends on circumstances that we need to explore. Term human grammars can generate infinitely many sentence types, but for the purpose of transmitting information, only a finite number of them can be relevant. Natural selection cannot directly reward the theoretical ability to construct infinitely long sentences. Let us therefore consider a group of individuals that use N different sentence types or syntactic structures and specifies the number of sentence types that are relevant for, from the perspective of biological fitness. Now imagine individuals that learn their mental grammars by memorizing lists of sentence types. We can ask how many sample sentences a child must hear for the whole population to maintain N sentence types. If all sentence types occur equally often, we simply obtain N, your B being greater than N. We can compare the performance of individuals using list-based versus rule-based grammars. Using the result of batch learners, we have comparable memory requirements to list learners. We find that the number of relevant types, N, has to exceed a constant times the logarithm of the number of candidate grammars. They have a formula even for it. If the condition holds, then rule-based grammars are more efficient than list-based grammars and will have a fitness advantage. We have formulated a mathematical theory for the population dynamics of grammar acquisitions and calculated the conditions for universal grammar to induce coherent grammatical communication within a population. The key result is a coherent threshold that relates the maximum size of the search space to the performance of the learned procedure. Only universal grammar that satisfies the coherent threshold could promote the evolutionary of grammatical communication. Our theory also describes the cultural evolution of different candidate grammars within the same universal grammar. We have studied competition between universal grammars and outline the natural selection leads to a limited language learning period. leads to a limited language learning period and search spaces of intermediate size. Finally, rule based generative grammars can only evolve if the number N of sentence types which are relevant for with respect to biological fitness exceeds the logarithm of the number of candidate grammars. Log N, otherwise it would be more efficient to memorize sentence types associated with arbitrary meaning. And this type language would have remained a rather dull communication system without any creative ability of the level syntax. If however, rule based grammar are selected, then the potential for making an infinite use of finite means comes as a byproduct. The general connection between learning theory and evolution dynamics should be applicable to a wide variety of learning situations that arise in biology or artificial intelligence. For language acquisition, the theory makes testable predictions about the relation between the size of the search space and the performance of the learning process procedure for language evolution. This report is a step towards quantitative understanding of how universal grammar can arise by natural selection. Awesome, really glad to have read through that one. Appreciate people listening and having patience. You know, I'll add, I'm going to timestamp this soon. I think I'm going to do one last one. And one last paper I'm going to read, put in the chat and you know, there's a lot to cover. I might be at this for a few weeks, you know, just these precursors or information to what's needed to be known to understand. So I'm going to look at quickly 2014. This actually refers to second language acquisition in the study out of China on universal grammar and second language acquisition. So universal grammar proposed by Chomsky eighty six has gained a large popularity in linguistic study. The paper firstly illustrates the background and major context of universal grammar and second language acquisition. Then it addresses the three hypothesis of universal grammar in second language acquisition, which center on whether adult learners, language learners have access to the principles and parameters of universal grammar constructing the grammar of a second language. Furthermore, the paper investigates problems of universal grammar and application of second language acquisition and discusses elaborately on the recent challenges that universal grammar encounters in the field of second language acquisition. So, you know, mentioned the previous article about the evolution, we could consider like animal language, like bird songs and your whale and dolphins. And now we're looking, you know, if there's this window of opportunity that makes it very easy for children to acquire a language, but we still know that adults could learn language, what happens to these structures? So I want to get, you know, get through another study before we conclude. So in linguistic field, Chomsky's theories on language learning are widely discussed. This paper tends to show recent development in L two learning, second language learning through Chomsky's principle and parameters and universal grammar. As many scholars have their opinions on Chomsky's theories on universal grammar and have their own takes on it. More recently, arguments on application of UG to SLA seem to be a favorite position, though Chomsky does not extend this theory to into SLA. Thus, issues on individual interpretations of the theory on SLA are necessary. Three specific hypothesis under the framework of universal grammar are addressed from the perspective and review with supporting evidence, along with the this major criticisms that universal grammar faces with the field of second language acquisition are investigated. Obviously, we all learnt language as a child, but we don't really remember that. But a lot of us go on to learn second languages as an adult in this new multicultural era. Many of us might even be multilingual. So, universal grammar and second language acquisition. The field of linguistics, an issue that has prompted considerable debate is the question of whether linguistic capacities are innate or not. One is the nativist who claims that children are born with some linguistic knowledge. The other is the empiricist. They assert instead that children acquire language from linguistic experience. Since 1940, the behavioralism has occupied a dominant position interpreting the language learning. The behavioral theory holds that language learning is a process of stimulus and response. However, some evidences in support of the nativist view comes from children of limited linguistics experience in certain situation in which the child is not presented with any consistent linguistic model. They appear to have the capacity to invent some aspects of language. This gave insight for Chomsky's innate ness of language. Originally, he put forward language acquisition device to refer to the innate mechanism of the language learning in the late. He illustrates universal grammar as a way to introduce his idea. Chomsky believes that universal grammar is a special device, a human brain, which can help people learn language quickly is unconscious and potential knowledge which exist in the human brain without learning and determines the existing appearance of human language. Chomsky uses universal grammar to account for first language learning. Nineteen ninety four, Cook stated that UG approach tries to account for the nature of language representation, the nature of language learning and the nature of language use. Essentially, UG approach is trying to characterize what structures and processes the child brings to the task of first language acquisition, drawing on the two central concepts and principles and parameters. This is Cook state in an article named Chomsky's universal grammar and second language acquisition, that the language properties inherited in human mind make up universal grammar, which consists not of particular rules or particular grammar, but a set of general principles that apply to all grammars and that leave certain parameters open. Universal grammar sets limits within which human languages can vary. Carroll, two thousand and five defines parameters as grammatical features that can be set to any of several values. For example, the null subject parameter deal with whether a language permits constructions that have no object. The parameter has two values, null subject, the language allows sentence without a subject or subject, the language requires subjects for sentences to be grammatical. For example, the sentence want more apple is not grammatical in English, but it would be fine in Italian or Spanish. Thus, Italian is a null subject language and English is a subject language. Another parameter is pro drop, which is about the relationship between government, a relationship government between subject and verb. Pro drop parameter consists of two kinds of parameter settings. One is pro drop and the other is non pro drop, while Chinese is a pro drop language and English is non pro drop language. For example, the sentence it is raining, which cannot be admitted because every English sentence must have a subject. However, the Chinese sentence, Ji yu li, the sentence illustrates that Chinese is pro drop and empty subjects can occur and inversion can take place. Thus, Chomsky asserts that the grammar of language can be regarded as a particular set of values for these parameters, while universal grammar is the overall system of principles and parameters. Furthermore, Heim's parameter setting theories also indicate that children were born not only with parameters, but also with the value of the parameters. So Chomsky's UG approach, especially the principles and parameters to language learning is a significant turn at the time. Furthermore, universal grammar interpretation has been extensively used to explain the first language acquisition. Where it has the strength to address theoretically, the projection problem, the way in which learners know more than they could have learned from the input to which they have been exposed. To conclude, universal grammar has been given a precise the explanation to language learning, especially to native language learning, which is part of the reason why universal grammar is of significance in the field of linguistics. Meanwhile, second language acquisition becomes a field of its own right since the nineteen sixties, marking the serious study of the theoretical implications of observed language behavior. Moreover, many conferences and journals are devoted to the studies of second language acquisition. Nineteen eighty, it's possible to read nearly everything that is written about second language acquisition theory and related studies to keep up with the newest current data ideas. Nowadays, the field of second language acquisition is in boom along with enormous scope and depth, both in terms of the variety of topics under investigation and the research approaches used to investigate. Even today, it is obvious that a continued increase in the publication in the field. Furthermore, the study of second language acquisition focused on the developed knowledge of the use of language by children and adults who already know at least one other language. The field of second language acquisition study seems to be important, both theoretically and practically. The theoretical importance closely relate to understanding of how language is represented in the mind and whether there's a difference between the way language is acquired and processed and the way other kinds of information are acquired and processed. Practical importance arises from the assumption that understanding of how languages are learned will lead to more effective teaching practices in a broad context. Knowledge of second language acquisition may help educational policymakers set more realistic goals for programs for both second language courses and learning of the majority of language by minority of the language, children and adults. Second language acquisition is useful both for language learning and language teaching. As for the teaching methodology, second language acquisition is given insight into it. Many scholars who are interested in second language teaching methodology are also closely related to a second language acquisition study. At the time, three advances in the field of second language acquisition should be mentioned. Firstly, the disentanglement of issues concerning second language learning development from issues related to second language classroom processes. Secondly, the discovery of the contrastive analysis hypothesis, the behaviorist driven view that second language development is a tribute of the transfer of habits of the first language onto the second language was empirically inadequate. Thirdly, the falling into disrepute of Lenenberg's critical period hypothesis for language acquisition. If critical period hypothesis can be maintained without any certainty, then adult second language acquisition can no longer be regarded as peripheral to the interest of linguistic theory and comes to assume the same status as first language acquisition as a testing ground for linguistic period. However, critical period put forth by Lenenberg is a controversy in the field of second language acquisition. The critical period hypothesis hold that language acquisition should occur before the onset of puberty in order for language to fully develop. And this hypothesis advanced by Lenberg only exists in the course of first language acquisition. One strong support of the hypothesis is from perspective of accent. However, Lenberg leaves open questions of whether this critical period extends to second language acquisition, which will occur after the first language is already in place. Many researchers supporting critical period of SLA believe that universal grammar is not available to second language acquisition, which is a controversial question, but evidence concerning age effects on second language learning can contribute to a further delineation of critical period accounts. There are three universal like universal grammar hypothesis per second language acquisition. In the late twentieth century, many scholars explored the logic problem of language acquisition when the finding that children seem to have knowledge that cannot be gained by observation and imitations from the adult arose. Chomsky argued that the knowledge is richly articulated and shared with others from the same speech community, whereas the data available are much more impoverished to determine by any general procedure of induction, generalization, analogy, association, or whatever. And Chomsky's word, the knowledge of language is not learned and the part of the core of universal grammar is biological endowment. Chomsky's universal grammar provides a faithful explanation for the logical problem of first language acquisition. While with the development of second language acquisition, many scholars are researching the logic problems, second language acquisition, particularly in the adult second language learners. Most studies dealing with language universals and second language acquisition is illustrated from their perspective of universal grammar. Universal grammar is most often a term refers to the study universal core hypothesized by Chomsky and others to underlie all natural language. It is well known that there are many approaches to language universality. However, Chomsky's approach has gained much popularity. One of the major reasons is that it provides us a way emphasizing the significance of child language acquisition. It is no doubt that numerous linguists are still doubtful of the accessibility of universal grammar to the acquisition of second language or foreign language. It is noticeable that many linguists are researching on that whether universal grammar are available to second language learning or not. With regard to second language acquisition, the question is more complicated. On the one hand, the first language is available to second language learners. On the other hand, the end result, the second language learning is not native like competence. And as is the case in the first language acquisition, the current research mainly focuses on the extent the L two learners have access to innate systems, especially the concepts of principles and parameters. Hence, three different types of schools arose, which are follows the direct accessibility, indirect accessibility and the inaccessibility. As Cook states, the fundamental different property is second language learners possess a grammar of native language incorporating the principles of universal grammar and specifying particular set of values for its parameters. Two possibilities of the second language learning need to be considered. The learners might have access to universal grammar either directly or indirectly with the help of the first language. Some studies suggest that second language learns behave according to the precepts of universal grammar, the access position. And other studies suggest the positive non access position. Still, others argue that second language learners have access to universal grammar through their native language, the indirect access position. Correspondently, different hypotheses appear with supporting ideas and experiments to examine the application of universal grammar in second language acquisition. The direct accessibility hypothesis asserts adult learners learn both first and second languages by setting parameters to universal grammar. So if universal grammar can be used in the first language, it can be applied to the second language learner. Second language learners make full use of universal grammar, including the part which is not reflected in the mother tongue. Second language learns grammar as knowledge is determined by the degree of universal grammar. The contributions of Flynn and White are representative of general approach adopted concerning the accessibility of universal grammar and second language acquisition. Therefore, these will be illustrated in detail in this essay. Flynn investigates the development of binding conditions on pronomial anaphoria in second language English and whether that development is influenced by the parameter setting of learning first language. Flynn compares two groups of performance of L two learners English. I'm going to skip through the studies of these. But I hope people have time to read through them, skimming through these. And you see all these different studies to compare the theory. So the problems of universal grammar and second language acquisition. Many researchers state that there are problems in universal grammar applies to second language acquisition. For example, fries and Palmer, they argue that there is a wide acceptance of the challenges that the existence of cross linguistic difference makes second language acquisition extremely different from first language acquisition. Many arguments put forward by linguists are as follow. Is well known that Chomsky's universal grammar has put forward in response to the logical problem of the first language acquisition. At the same time, since the nineteen seventies, a rapid development second language acquisition has led linguistics to focus on universal grammar and second language acquisition. It is known that the discovery that L one and L two have similarity in the nineteen seventies have given an imperative to SLA. For example, there are similarities in the development of number of morphemes than negative in interrogative structures in English than first language in SLA. Children learning negative construction, the first language go through well defined stages. L two learners also go through very rigid stages when acquiring certain construction to L two, which are neither like the first language or the L two they are exposed to, nor are they like the stages children go through. However, is until recently that researcher addressing the differences between first language acquisition and SLA. That's the biggest differences between first language acquisition and second language acquisition are follow. Firstly, the process of first language acquisition is natural and unconscious, while SLA is conscious. Secondly, cognitive ability of children is still in the immature stage, while that of an adult is already mature. Thirdly, the environment, the first language acquisition and that of SLA are different. Fourthly, the input modes are different. Children get first language input through spoken language. Adults get L two input through spoken language, written language, as well as notation. Last but not least, in the process of first language acquisition, there's no interference from other language, but L two learners use mother tongue constantly. Mother tongue and L two knowledge will interact with each other somehow. Some linguistics have made specific distinction between L one acquisition in SLA. Chinese linguist Zhang puts for her understanding argue that the application of UG to SLA is complicated because of the fundamental differences. She states that L two learners are cognitive mature. L two learners already know at least one language and L two learners have different motivations for learning L two. That is, say, what makes L one acquisition different from SLA is the fact that L two learners begin the L two learning with a well formed first language acquisition system, a more mature cognitive capacity and advanced learning mechanisms. Zhang states that this continues to be the central issue and deserves painstaking effort. In fact, many researchers of a decline have decided that the process of the first and second are so different that they can account for them with totally separate theories. For example, Crashen distinguishes L one learning from L two learning. You observe first language learning is involving acquisition and L two learning is based on instead on learning. With the advanced research and focus on universal grammar and LSA, most scholars believe that UG is available to L two learning. However, due to differences between L one acquisition and SLA, most linguists agree with the indirect accessibility hypothesis. This is part of the reason why so many researchers are in support of indirect accessibility of UG to SLA. They see both the influence of UG in L two learning and the fundamental differences between the first and second. There's also other problems concerning with the universal grammar approaches to SLA. Just as Evan points out in his book named A Cognitive Approach to Language Learning, the paper focuses on three different problems. Firstly, there's a problem that UG itself cannot stand still, but this problem is very vital of the fields in many perspectives and that many researchers working within UG may be satisfied with state affairs, or the consumers interested in explanatory value the account can provide in related areas rather than developments of linguistic theory for their own sake, find themselves stranded since the version of the theory they are diligently testing proves to be abandoned by UG researchers themselves, given the state of affairs and the likely continuation in the future. Whichever newer version is the theory supplying the other, the attractions of the approach weigh considerably. Second, there is an issue that UG researchers focus on what the underlying theory deems to be important. In other words, the agenda is set from the fundamental discipline. So in many ways, are the research methodology and the data collection. Each of these factors poses problems for SLA and language teaching. However, many of the issues that the language teaching profession consider important do not receive high priority in UG studies. Similarly, methods for eliciting competence oriented language seem a long way away from the concept of proficiency that language teachers and L two researchers take for granted. As a result, there is a remoteness about UG studies as far as ongoing L two developments is generally concerned, a lack of external validity, which quite apart from the experimental evidence undermines the relevance and significance of the UG based account. Thirdly, UG does not complement effectively the process perspective, which is fundamental to the current approach. Essentially, there are two perspectives on the issue. One is the approach of human language development after the critical period. Here to assume that the critical period exists. The other is the way in which older learners learn in general. Peter states that UG approach to language acquisition will remain pretty much Peter states that UG approach to language acquisition will remain pretty much in the background. So conclusion, Chomsky's UG is a significant theory in the field of linguistics and is given a solid explanation of the way that how children learn language is fundamental and significant turn or shit from the behaviorist opinion. The principle and parameter logic concept of UG has gained much focus from linguistics. It is full of value in understanding language learning. Meanwhile, with the quickened development of SLA, through different viewpoints appear concerning the UG approach to language learning is not appropriate to deny the role that UG plays in language learning. To conclude, it can be seen that there are many problems concerning the UG to the approach to SLA, which mainly include the fundamental differences between the L-one and L-two learning and numerous specific problems concerning language processing, cognitive mechanisms, as well as other issues. Through analyzing the problems, it can be better understood what will be mainly focused on in the later researches of the field of linguistics. So the progress can be moved forward to language learning and second language acquisition. Okay, great stuff. Down to four people watching, you know, hard stuff to take in. You know, I'm gonna call it wraps here. Enjoyed doing this, learned a lot. Hope people are gaining from it. I could see it being more useful later when I add the table of contents and timestamp it so people could just see what they want. And you see that this is going to be extremely complicated, this task we're on and we're involved in. There is no simple path to uh understanding consciousness. There really aren't large answers to it. And we see all these different factors of physics and sense perception, biology, neuro- neurobiology, uh, you know, the concepts of what the brain does, what's involved in thought, cognition, calculations, mental processes, languages, how we acquire languages, the differences in how we acquired as a kid to an adult. And uh, so there's going to be a lot to it. And I appreciate people listening and uh stay tuned for more. I'll probably do this again tomorrow. Shalom.